...of June 6, 2022, of the Westford Planning Board. We have all five members of the Planning Board with us. Bob is remote, so votes will be taken via roll call again. We have Jeff Morissette and Joe Giannowitz from Town Staff, and we have Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer, with us this evening. Action-packed agenda, a little bit of everything, like all good things in life. We'll start, as always, with open forum. Does anybody on the board have any items for open forum? Nope.
Nope.
No? Joe or Jeff, anything from -- Joe, anything for open forum?
Just a reminder to folks, town meeting is Saturday. Weather pending. Check the town website in case there is a move to Sunday, the rain date. But it'll be Saturday at 9:00 a.m. over at Westford Academy, so please attend if you're able.
Yes.
That's right, rain is in the forecast, isn't it?
Fifty, fifty percent. Fifty's.
Definitely out there. Paul, anything from Town Engineering?
Just a public service. If you're out in the Griffin Road area tomorrow, there'll be some delays where they'll be paving cloverleaf tomorrow, so that generally backs up trucks and traffic a little while if you're in that area. Be patient.
Gotcha. Thank you. All right, great. With all of that, we'll go to --
Anything from the audience?
Oh, anything from the audience for open forum? Good call. All right, seeing none. We will go right to our public hearing items. The first topic before us this evening is PB 2201. Well, he mentioned it. No, he did not, actually. We will be -- if anybody is here this evening for PB 2211, 504 Groton Road, the applicant has requested postponement without discussion to the July 18th meeting, just as a public service.
All votes, roll call?
Yep, said that in the opening. Yep, all votes will be taken by roll call this evening with Bob being remote. All right, so on to 5 Make Peace Road. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. My name is Paul Alf, and I represent the applicant. Allow me to introduce Jeff Brem. He's the project engineer from Isner Brem Corporation. We have not been here since February because during the intervening period, we received a variety of comments from your staff and a long preliminary letter from the engineering department, and we spent our time doing our best to respond to the concerns of both your staff and the engineering department, and there have been changes made to the plan. Jeff Brem will go over the changes that were made to the plan and specifics, but one of the things I need to put out, point out is that there's now a waiver request. We spent some time with intellectual dialogue with the building inspector regarding retaining walls, and he clarified that any retaining wall greater than six feet would have to meet these side yard or rear yard setback requirements, so we wanted to eliminate retaining walls which were greater than six feet. There's also a provision that's unique to the commercial highway district that requires that retaining walls that are greater than four feet be terraced. So we did our best, you will see, to eliminate the retaining walls. We could not reduce all the retaining walls to less than four feet. We'd have some retaining walls that are terraced at five feet along Route 3 because we're between a rock and a hard place, and that hard place is Route 3. Nothing we can do about that. So there is a new waiver request in the package as a consequence, but I think you'll find that it still fulfills the intent and purpose of the bylaw because that retaining wall is not going to be ISO to anybody in the world. So Jeff, if you want to go through the changes that were made so the board can understand where we are today.
Sure. Good evening. Jeffrey Brown with Isner Brem Corporation, representing the applicant. There you go. That's the old plan, to refresh your memory, and some of the key items that were brought up at the board were some of the parking at the beginning adjacent to the neighbor to the east, the retaining wall, and some of the drainage relating to that same neighbors to the east and north. Engineering had a -- they had a long letter that we've addressed, but I think their biggest concern, I don't want to speak for Paul, but I guess I will, is that infiltration basin in the back towards the southeast portion of the site was close to the wall, and he was concerned that, you know, you never want to put water next to a wall, so he had a good point there. So these are some of the bigger issues, and then, of course, as Paul mentioned, the retaining walls, both on the northeast side and the southwest side of the site, didn't meet, as it turns out, the regulations, so we have to terrace them and be either at under six feet, no, under five feet with a waiver, or ask for the waiver, and we are asking for the waiver on the southwest wall, that one there. So let's go, Joe, if you could, to the new plans. This is the new set, first, second, third. Existing conditions plan, we also add a lot of changes to it. Let's go to that for a second, just so you know. The original survey, it was done by Jeff Haniford's group, and they didn't have some of the information that was off-site because it was under snow when they did that work. So we found a couple of catch basins that showed up once the snow melted, and some other things that were requested by the engineering department that were put on the existing conditions plan. Okay, continue on. This is just the erosion and sediment control plan and demo plan, so we'll just skip that one. This is the layout, so let's look at this for a second. On this plan, you'll notice at the beginning of the site toward the north, we added units 13 and 14. Those are two new units to the plan. That totals 3,608 square feet, so the new total building square footage is 25,865 square feet in two buildings. Also on this plan, you'll note that we moved the pavement to the northeast next to those two neighbors, away from the neighbors. What else shows up on this plan? And we've changed some of the parking areas, which I'll go through in a little bit. All right, let's jump to the grading plan. There we go. So this plan has all kinds of information on it, and you'll see that there is still a slope to the northeast, but that wall's been reduced from a long 170-foot wall to a just a short, I think it's 50 or 60 feet long, but it's only two feet high.
Which one?
Move your arrow to the left, a little bit higher.
It's not a wall now, it's grading.
It's just grading, and it's just, we're just two feet off, so we're just going to use some borders at the end for a very short section. So we've basically eliminated that wall. On the other side, the north side, you'll see a series of dark dashed lines. Those are the three terraced walls that we talked about. Those, the bottom two are five feet tall, and the top one's two feet tall. It can be constructed entirely within the property boundaries without going onto Route 3. And if you recall, some of us on the site walk, we actually walked up to the top of that hill and looked at that, and that's really where it is, at the top of that hill cutting into Route 3. That's the biggest thing. We did some utility work, again, at the review comments. We showed now a gas line that brings us gas to the buildings underground, electric. Fire Department, right where your arrow is, Fire Department requested a hydrant be placed there, so there's the hydrant that's on-site next to the building. They also asked for a path of their largest vehicle turning path radius plan, which we've provided. I've heard through the grapevine that they may have a concern with that and have asked Engineering to look at it a little bit more closely. I looked at it again, and I didn't see anything wrong with it, so I'm going to presume for the moment that it's fine until we get back. We eliminated most of the parking out front, or half the parking out front, partly, and added a building there. So the total parking required for the site under its use, as determined by Paul and the building inspector in previous correspondence, the requirement is 65 parking spaces. We are proposing 82 parking spaces. That includes 14 spaces inside the building. Each unit will have an interior space that they could use and 68 outside. So you'll notice that even if nobody parked inside, we still have enough parking outside. The biggest change that Engineering's going to see is a stormwater outlet and moving that facility. So you can see we moved it far away from that wall to the northeast. It's now basically behind the entire rear of the building. We also changed the grade so that instead of using 330 XLs, which are 30-inch high, we're using 150 XLs, which are 18-inch high. So we've reduced the depth of those in order to maintain the groundwater separation. We've also accounted for groundwater mounding, and then that infiltration basin will discharge through a pipe network, pick up the storm drainage, as you recall, that Route 3 is dumping onto the site. And that gets picked up in a closed system, and it goes to the north and discharges a little bit further to the fire retention facility we have in the front right. And then from there, it's treated again, and it's infiltrated, and then that will have an overflow, and Joe is doing a good job, the overflow pipe through the front of the site to the west, and then the intent is to tie into a catch basin that Mastiot installed right next to their overpass conveniently, and that catch basin ties into the large 60-inch culvert that crosses Make Peace Road. We obviously will need to get permission to do that tie-in, and any approval would be conditional upon that condition for Mastiot. I've already talked to two, by email, I've emailed two different people at the EP, one in the Boston office, one in the regional office, and we're in different region. You're in Region 4?
We're 3.
3, okay. I'm dealing with Region 3, so.
It's Chris Chambers. If you haven't talked to him, you want to talk to him soon.
Okay. And that discharges to a brook that's on the other side of Make Peace Road. Eventually, that brook drains into Deep Brook. And then we have, I don't know, 100 comments from the engineering department, and we've outlined our review of each of those comments in a letter that we sent to the board on May 27th, and how we addressed each and every comment, including some changes to the hydrocarbon stormwater analysis. And that brings us to, those are the changes. I know that, or I suspect that Engineering hasn't done their review yet, so we'll be waiting that. And then there are two waiver requests that Paul mentioned. One is that wall that we are requesting waiver to go to five feet high for the terraced wall, and then the grading would like to go to 2 to 1 in other locations where your requirement is 3 to 1 for commercial locations, but we have a couple of other grading areas that are, would like to go to 2 to 1, and we have an erosion control plan to deal with that. Everything drains away from Route 3, and drains, now it drains away from the neighbors. So we think that waiver's in order as well, minimize the work. So that's the changes, and you will have reports coming from your staff on these changes shortly, I hope.
Great. Yes, in fact, Mr. Chair, we did receive the plans last week, and we'll get them in the order that they were received. We'll get your comments back.
Great. Excellent. Joe or Jeff, anything from Town Staff?
Living with us at this time.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any other comments from the applicant? Otherwise, we'll go to the board. Paul?
Nope. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thanks. Darren, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I saw there was a lot of kind of dialogue between the applicant and staff and the neighbors on some of the questions as well, so thank you for that. Paul, I would just ask if you guys pay particular attention, I think, to the landscaping design along where the abutters are, the residential abutters, which I think we talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I say, one of their concerns, obviously, is sort of privacy there, so.
Sure. It's no secret that the engineering department knows very little about landscaping. It's sometimes green, but seriously, it would, it may be something that the planner is more familiar with, or.
Great.
Do you know anything about landscaping?
As a planner, most of that's.
I will say that it was done by a professional landscaper, Jennifer Brooke out of Concord. She does a lot of work with us and incredibly gifted. She did the Discovery Museum work, if you've ever been there, so I will say she's gifted, and she's worked a lot on this. And she also did the lighting plan, which I think has been reviewed and accepted by your police department.
Did see some comments in there.
Yep, I'm curious to see Engineering's responses.
One quick question on the lighting topic. Did we see a lighting plan yet in the actual plan design yet?
Yes.
Isn't it?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, Darren?
Nope.
Is it in the one you submitted earlier?
I believe it's in the one we just, I could check.
I could be mistaken, but I think it's in the latest version.
Which we have or don't have?
Which I believe we should have.
No, there was another.
Comments, I think, from the building inspector on that too. Oh, it's this? Is it that?
Yeah.
I think it's page 50 of the packet, if that helps.
Okay, so it's not in, not in the.
No, no, no. I don't know. Right here.
Not at all.
There you go. Great. Darren, if nothing else?
No, I just, and the new building that is new to us, same use, same style as the other building, just smaller?
It's just an ancillary building, yeah, much smaller.
Same sort of, for a tenant, not, it's not like a maintenance facility or anything for the same.
No, no, it's to lease out to similar tenants and users.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Mike.
I don't have anything. We'll just wait for Engineering.
Kate, my name's Kate. Oh, yeah. I'm a bit confused on the retaining walls. Is there one that's more than six feet?
Negative.
And then why do you need, why do you, maybe the building can explain why you need a waiver for the tiered ones since our bylaws say what to do?
Yes, the, a particular requirement for a major commercial project states that if retaining walls are greater than four feet high, they must be tiered. And it also says the planning board can waive these requirements. So in this circumstance, because of the slope adjacent to Route 3, Jeff was able to design the retaining walls, so none are greater than five feet, but five is greater than four, so therefore, we're requesting a waiver. Even though they are tiered, they will be greater than four feet.
So you want to have that just in case?
No, the way the design is, the way it's laid out, there are some retaining walls which are five feet high.
Each of the tiers are more than four?
Maybe this will help.
I got it.
Can I approach?
Can I approach the bed?
My personal sketch on this, it may help. It's on the plans. And to be clear, tiers are not required. You could build a wall 80 feet tall if it's designed by a structural engineer.
No, the zoning bylaw requires in a commercial highway, I mean, for a planned commercial development, that retaining walls greater than four feet must be tiered. Doesn't say that anywhere else in the bylaw, but it's in there, and that's what we're doing, so we had to address it.
Okay, just 'cause my interpretation didn't say that all the tiers had to be four feet or less, but building commissioner, if that's what he says, then I'm okay. I got it now.
Okay.
In the fire apparatus plan, you said you're going back and forth with Fire Department. I was okay with your proposed condition regarding noise. I thought that that made sense, so I was okay with that. So there's no parking in reserve now because you added the buildings?
There are parking in reserve. What's required is 65 spaces, and we have 82.
But you said 14 of them are in the building.
14 are inside and 68 are outside.
So are you gonna?
It still leaves three.
So are three of them, you're not going to build?
No, we're building all, we're building all spaces.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You're not, but originally, we talked about.
I see what you're saying. Originally, you said there were 65 spaces.
Yeah, and you didn't have those buildings, so you were going to bank the ones that were down towards the entrance.
We were going to have some reserved spaces, right? We got rid of those, yes.
Yeah, okay.
The two definitions of reserve, you mean, I get it now.
I got it, yeah. I know for the neighbors, this 100-foot setback, I agree because any special permits and waivers and variances for the other lots don't apply to this lot, so I can kind of agree with you that there's no 100-foot setback required. And you had a question, are there going to be any waivers to major commercial projects? You had requested that, so.
And there are two. One is the four-foot-high retaining wall requirement, and the other is a slope requirement in the major commercial project.
Three to one is required, so we're going, we'd like to go to 2 to 1, which is typical.
Okay.
That's it.
And there was also the question whether or not you would have to go to the Conservation Commission?
We do have to go to the Conservation Commission, and we will be.
So could that affect our decision?
It's just for the outlet, so it's all, no work is being done to the actual buffer, but the pipe itself and the road itself is within 100 feet of the wildland, so we have to dig up the road and put the pipe in.
Okay. I'm just thinking, if they give their decision after we give ours and.
I'm sorry, let me get that. We're not digging up the road. We have to work within 100 feet of the buffer to put the pipe in.
I was going to say.
I saw you move.
We're digging up the road.
No, no digging up the road, no digging up the road.
You don't want to do that.
And in your traffic review, it is a 10% increase in traffic, which to me is a fair amount. It's not like 1% or half a percent, so I would want to make sure about site distances and all of that, and I can't think of any other mitigation that might need to occur.
That was in your submitted materials, Jeff?
It was.
And.
Before we get off that topic, there are two trees, you're right there, two shade trees that will have to be removed and will require a shade tree hearing.
Any plans to replace them somewhere else where it won't affect site distance?
That's up to the tree warden.
Who's the tree warden?
The Director of Public Works, Mr. Steve Cronin.
Excellent.
Duly authorized.
And that's all I had, and I appreciate that you're working with the neighbors and Engineering to figure out as much as practicable and within the bylaws to help us with this. So you have the same number of units on the top you're adding?
Correct.
You're adding two.
Same building.
Yep, all righty. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Kate. Bob?
The only question I have is because it's unfortunate, I can't read the print that was in the packet, the resolution's too low. It does look like there are some proposed walls beside the, or alongside the abutters properties. Could I get a clarification on the height of those walls?
Yes, sir. Two feet, two feet high, Bob.
Okay.
Just.
That's the only question I have.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I had in addition to what Kate discussed.
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
And, yeah, my primary questions were around landscaping to the abutters and the point that Kate asked about the retaining wall, which this was actually very helpful in answering, so I kind of, I get it now. Okay. Any other comments from Engineering, given that?
We'll get on this as quick as we can.
Great. Anybody from the audience here to discuss PB 2201, 5 Make Peace Road? Please, to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Emily Teller, 9 Texas Road. I have three questions. The first one is trees, and I'm just wondering if you are going to be planting trees on the lot, and if they would be of, you know, certain good-natured trees to plant, native trees, and also as big a caliper as you can and guarantee their life for two years. And as far as the shade trees, that's a concern too, because I'm pretty sure that the diameter of the shade trees is significant in that road, and so I would ask that you plant more, plant bigger. I don't know what to do, but losing trees in Westford is a pretty big concern of many people in this town. The second question is about parking, and I'm sorry, I don't know how to read this, and I don't know what parking in the building means, but does that mean you're adding 30% more than the required, and are they going to be under the building, or how's the parking?
You can see them, I think, along the perimeter of the back of the building there, where Joe's kind of highlighting, and then there are some out in the front near the second building, there's some there as well.
And so does that total 85?
There's also the parking, there's two, there's one or two spaces. There's one spot in each of the shops, and then there's parking outside of those shops, which you see those sort of dashed red panels.
At grade, not under the building. There's big garage doors and they drive in.
Yeah, they can just park behind the garage door.
Oh, so they literally are in the buildings?
Think fire station.
Okay, okay. And I guess my question about lighting would be, I would hope, I did see the lighting fixture that Joe showed as part of that, and it doesn't, I'm hoping it's full-shielded cutoff, mostly for the neighbor's sake that it comes down and they can't see the fixture, but if there are any on-building lights, I would also hope that they would be shielded so that nobody can see any fixtures.
There are, there is lighting on the building. I saw one mounted on the lighting plan. Do you, does the applicant care to speak to the lighting that would be attached to the building?
I believe it's full shade, full cutoff as well.
So you can't see the fixture inside? It'll be shaded?
Say that again? I'm sorry.
Like, you won't be able to see the bulb looking at the building. It'll be shielded so that the light is going down to the building.
I don't know about that.
Well, that's what I'm saying about a shielded light would be good, especially if there are neighbors in the area, and landscaping won't provide any buffer.
I know we have requirements for shielding on the lights. I just don't know if it's.
You have foot candles escaping the property, that's your.
We also know that they can't go up.
Well, there is the foot candle plan right there, so you can see this thing on the.
Is that the type of light up in the upper?
That's for the streetlights, yes.
Not the buildings mounted lights.
But there, it'd be a similar light, and you can see the path, the pattern of where it lights it up.
So from what we can see on the plan, it does not look like light would be escaping the site from what we can see?
Definitely, but looking at a bulb is a little problematic.
Understood.
So I'll just put it in there for discussion. Thank you very much.
Yep. Joe, it might be helpful, could you pull up page 57? I think that's the preliminary landscaping plan, which does show some of the representation of pine cones that we make.
There you go.
So this is what they proposed for tree planting, at least initially.
Yep.
Good evening. Good evening. Nilesh, I'm Puri, my wife, 7 Make Peace Road. We had a couple of discussions with Ed, and he did mention that he will look into the possibility of building the wall where, you know, the entrance, so that I just wanted to see if that's been considered, that's first.
Yeah, I didn't understand, like, because now it's two-feet retaining walls, is the two-feet one, that's in our, like, the backyard one or the, because the main issue was to shield and not have direct access because the two feet, anyone can.
I'm.
And again, like, what you said, like, the lighting, because our kids, the bedrooms are there, and so it's, like, you know.
So you're asking about the retaining wall that is, Joe, is it right there? Is it the one that runs along that part of the property there?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Right, the retaining wall is really on the, adjacent to number nine.
Okay.
So it's not adjacent to number seven.
So how tall is the one that's adjacent to number seven on this side as well as that side?
There is no retaining wall against number seven, and most of the trees on the property would be saved. Joe, if you could, right, right where your arrow just was, right there, and then follow the edge of the grading line to the left, sorry, all those trees right there would be So there are some trees being retained adjacent to your property.
And there's absolutely no wall on either of the side that, so it would be completely open now that there are units on this side as well, so every, our property is completely accessible without any wall.
There'll be a slope, 2, 4, 6, 8, an eight-foot slope.
Well, and from what I see, they are planting, again, on slide 57 or page 57. It does appear like they're putting in 10 trees of some type there. So they are putting in a line of trees there, is what is on the plan right now.
But that's, that's just like, takes care of the visibility, right? But if somebody wants to just pass through the trees, they can anyways come down the property at any point of time.
Right, so that was our main concern with safety and privacy and everything, again.
So you're saying you're more interested in there being some sort of a fence line there?
Yes, definitely, because this is a commercial property, I, that tenants are going to come in, and, but it also says tenants. in, and, but it also says tenants and invitees, so potentially, you don't know who, you cannot really monitor who's coming, and if there is no fence on any side of my property, that makes it susceptible to...
Yeah, yeah, understood. Is there any appetite for putting in some sort of a privacy fence?
We'll check with the owner to see if that's something that he would like to add.
One more thing we talked, sorry, go ahead, finish that off, and then we'll talk about them.
You have a comment?
I'd be able to get a very, very local source for quality fencing.
Right across the street.
The shipping would be low.
Okay, so understood, and we can take that under advisement that you'd like to have some sort of privacy fence there?
Yeah.
And, so, again, with the noise, I, I saw the reply to that, that since this is commercial, and there was special variance made for building the houses there, so when that permit was given, I, I kind of want to understand, like, now that we are building a commercial property, does that variance not come into play of having neighbors and not being disturbed, because even though the decibel noise level is conforming with the commercial part, because it falls in that territory, but when the special assessment was made to build houses, doesn't that special variance protect the neighbors from not having to have those extra noise levels that comes with the commercial property?
That isn't how I would interpret this, a special permit, because, yeah, the way that I, and I, when I read Attorney Alfred's letter and sort of did a little bit of research this weekend on this myself, I think your use for having a house there is actually the non-conforming use based upon the zoning, right, and this is actually a conforming use based upon the zoning, am I getting that right?
You are correct.
So, you getting a special permit or a variance to be able to build your home there doesn't necessarily grant you the protections that you would if you were in a residential zoning district, is how I interpret it, isn't it?
Yes.
Although that's probably subject to interpretation.
Unless, there, I'm assuming there wasn't anything in the...
In the decision?
CBA decisions stating that they should be granted.
Race away from the commercial district.
So...
Yeah.
He's correct, if they got released for their property, they can't put binding conditions on another property that's not the subject of the...
I agree with that, but I just didn't know if, for future stuff, if they would need to be treated as commercial or residential properties.
I don't see anything in this section, an Attorney Alfred or a building commissioner could point something out otherwise, but I don't see anything that brings up that circumstance.
Well, I was just wondering in the decisions if there's anything...
I read the decisions, and I didn't see any condition imposed upon this property as regard to noise.
I mean, the treatment of their property, if the decisions for their properties, I agree, your, your property is separate from, from their property.
Correct. Correct. No, I don't, I don't know of any conditions of approval that affect our property as a consequence of the variances and special permits obtained by the abutters.
So that probably, that's not, yeah, yeah, that's, so, I think that the unfortunate answer to your question is, you don't get protection around noise from this property, this property has to adhere to the noise standards that would govern any commercial, you know, property in this, this is industrially zoned, actually, so it's, it's technically in an industrially zoned parcel, they can produce the amount of sound that is permissible by the zoning bylaw, regardless of the fact that you have an abutting property, in this case, because you're also in the industrial zoning district, and you've got a variance to build a home there.
So there's nothing we can do about the noise, and...
That's unfortunately, yes.
I, I, yeah, I, I can't see anything.
Yeah, I'm just going to go back and see if there was any mention when we bought the house, right?
All right, right. Did you build it, or you bought it? No, you bought it after the fact, yeah.
Right, so was there any...
Did they disclose to you that you were buying, you had industrially zoned, right?
Was it necessary to disclose that, or was it like, just like, they can go without disclosing that, that's something that I would be interested in, right, because we should have known that, at that point of time.
Right, right, yeah, for sure, yeah. Okay.
And I will say, the applicant did propose some language, so if it's excessively loud, we could, we could condition that.
Yeah, we could, yes.
That would make sense.
Because it is a major commercial project, yeah.
Which does, which does give us some, that actually did put something in my head, and, Joe, we should have on our list of things to look at for future bylaw improvements, a general noise ordinance in general, if it's not already on the list, beyond just major commercial projects, it's only come up four or five times, I'm a slow study, but I catch up eventually. Yeah, but Darren, good point, I think we could put a condition in there, and I think Attorney Alfred did sort of offer some general language, so we can do some things to maybe mitigate the, the noise to a certain level. Are there hours of operation for the facility?
Yeah, you're assuming it does, right? Taking the original application of hours.
Recall what they are?
No.
That was, that was in December.
The kids would say it's been a minute.
Let me see.
I mean, something like that, we would maybe make it part of the conditions, the decision.
Can think about that if it wasn't provided, or maybe if they have a different answer now, that they're, maybe they can just provide some desired hours of operation.
Yeah, I, I think what's, what's going to be difficult about that is, I can envision a tradesperson being out somewhere at a job and then coming back late at night, immersively parking his or her vehicle, and then, and leaving again, so hours of operation could be, could be tough.
I was thinking the same thing, and I, I don't think you could preclude somebody from, like, dropping off a vehicle, or picking up a tool, or something like that, but maybe there's some language, Paul, that could be worked in around, you know, any sort of manufacturing could be limited to, you know, a certain window of time, right?
Could be a company that fixes alarms, and they had an alarm go off, and they need some parts, they stop by the store, get the parts, get the parts...
Sure, yeah, again, picking, picking, picking up parts and things like that, absolutely, but I, I think if there's any manufacturing, even light manufacturing that's going to be going on the site, maybe that could be, you know, limited to daytime daylight hours.
So noted. We'll find out.
All right, great.
So there won't be hours of operation, so anyone can come in?
I think when we talk to Ed, you guys know Ed, right? He did mention a couple of hours of operations, oh, I know you, Jeff, so, yeah, he did mention a couple of hours of operation.
Anyone can come in 3:00 AM in the night when the kids are sleeping, and there's all kinds of noise going on, so that distur, that's, that's a health issue, really speaking for the kids.
For the kids, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they said, we'll, we'll put manufacturing out.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we just gave them in some direction that we'd like there to be something around the hours of operation that would limit noise generating activities after hours, we've, we've definitely heard you.
Yeah, so just reiterating some points that we talked with Ed, right?
Yep.
Offline, not in the meeting, is he, we talked about...
It is in the email.
Yeah, it's in the email, and he did talk about putting a gated entrance where, you know, you can, you know, you know, they have to limited access, you know, only authorized people can go in, at some specific hours, not beyond the hours, so that was more comforting for us, when we talked to him.
Yep.
I didn't see that in the response as in one of the emails, so I would like to see that in the email, just so, to be, you know, more comfortable.
Yep.
That way, you know, we will be more comfortable in terms of knowing that not anybody's entering the property, not any time of the day, right, it has to be restricted by some hours, right? And, you know, he did talk about putting another wall, you know, on that side, but I think we can talk to, thinking about it, not, not necessarily, he said that he will think, he'll talk to the engineer and try to figure it out, but if that's the case, I would like to see that somewhere in the return, right, just so that I know.
Yeah, yeah. Any of those conversations playing out between, Ed is the owner?
Ed O'Neill, he's a, he's a principal with the, with the developer, but, but I, I think that there were conflicting issues regarding the retaining wall, one, we're having the engineering department discourage retaining walls, and the impression we got from your original communication is that you weren't fond of the retaining wall, but now I hear you saying you'd like to have a fence or something, so that the people that are on this site can't easily wander into your property, is that right?
That is correct.
A barrier of some kind, and, and in terms of there being a gate, I'll talk to Ed O'Neill and Mr. Goddard about that, I, I don't think they're going to propose that there be limited to hours of operation just for the reasons that I stated, is that when I'm coming back from a job in Maine, I'd like to be able to put the vehicle there.
Yep.
But I will talk to him about what he had in mind as, as regard to a gate and limiting hours.
Yeah, because, I mean, we don't see that on the plan, and I don't think we're considering that as a condition of approval or anything like that, so what, obviously, my concern is, is that there's a dialogue going on between the principal owner of the property and an abutter that isn't really reflected here, this board is considering what we can do to provide some accommodation for the abutters, but if things are being discussed like a gate, and those aren't on the plan, I'm not sure how we're, how we're going to provide them any support, yeah, assurances through the actual decision.
All right, I'll, we'll find out, get back to you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here for PB 2201, 5 Makepeace Road? Okay. All right, so, so I guess we're at the point where we're going to continue this until engineering has a chance to review it, do we think that that will be the July meeting?
We anticipate that that will be the case.
July what?
18th.
18th.
People keep scheduling things, trying to schedule things, the first week of July, and I ask them what's wrong with them.
All right, they always have this meeting on the week I take a vacation.
July 18th works for you, gentlemen.
It, it does, I'll be in town that, that day, yes.
Outstanding.
I have a question, do you think everything would be resolved by then, and we should ask staff to start a draft decision?
You concerned maybe that?
Yes.
Why not, depending on how comments go with engineering department applicant, why not at least give us that option?
Sure.
That way, if it makes sense, we'll certainly try to do that.
Sure.
Then obviously there was some issues.
That you think that we need to dig into a little further.
Or they weren't resolved quite in time to write a draft.
Sure.
Could be, could be that.
Could be that, it is the summer. Okay, great.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
So given that, is there a motion to continue PB 2201 to the July 18th Planning Board Meeting at 7:00 PM here in Meeting Room 201 Town Hall?
Move.
Second. Motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you.
Enjoy the start of summer.
It's nice having you back.
Especially the first week of July.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Don't mess with the first week of July.
Thank you.
By the way, I will be on vacation that week too.
That's handcrafted, you can't leave that.
I'm on vacation that week too.
You are?
Perfect.
Yeah, that is checked.
We could always do a special...
We'll give you a satellite phone.
We could always do a special one.
We could do a special. Yeah, we could do something special.
They just sacked Cassidy, the internet is a buzz.
Okay, the next item on our public hearing topic list, or item list, is PB 2211 for 504 Groton Road, the applicant has requested to continue without discussion to the July 18th, 2022 meeting, is there a motion to do so?
Go move.
Second. Motion in a second to continue PB 2211 to the July 18th meeting, 7:00 PM, Meeting Room 201 Town Hall, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. The next public hearing item is PB 2213, which is a scenic road permit for 59 Hildreth Street, and PB 2216, stormwater management for 59 and 63 Hildreth Street. Good evening.
Good evening, Mark Slager from Allen Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant, Russ Traywick is here to my left.
Yes.
We were here a few weeks ago regarding the two permits, the scenic road permit and the stormwater permit, and the board wanted to see a draft decision, which was, in hindsight, a pretty good idea, since I had some comments on the decision.
All right.
So I did get a chance to take a look at it, and I have no comments on these conditions of approval for the special, the scenic road.
Okay.
But I do have a couple comments on the stormwater permit.
Okay.
And just to step back a little bit, this is basically, it's a two-lot A&R subdivision, and work on the first lot is well underway, the house is already constructed, the septic system's in place, and the second lot is what triggers the need for the, the permit. So with that being said, it seems like a pre-construction meeting with anybody other than maybe Paul or town staff would be a bit of an overkill, since there's no connection to the water system, because there's no water on the road, so we've got a well, we've got septic systems, there's overhead utilities, we're just going to connect right to the house, so, again, it's just one single family lot that we're, we're adding to the plan, so it seems like a pre-construction meeting might be a bit of an overkill, so I'd like to request that any condition for a pre-construction meeting be deleted.
So that would be item six, then, under conditions of approval?
Yes. And then number seven would have to be reworded within so many days of the issuance of the permit, rather than tied to the construction.
On this particular project site, with, with two houses being built, we don't anticipate any need for the traditional big pre-construction meeting.
So how would you modify number seven, which will now become number six?
I don't know, within 14 days of the issuance of the permit?
I see what you're saying, so instead of saying prior to, say, within 14 days of the issuance of the permit?
Yeah, because typically we need to provide the engineering department two weeks' notice for the pre-construction meeting.
So you want the, for issuance of the building permit, within 14 days of...
No, within 14 days.
Yeah, there's no issue with the building permit issuance, but at number seven, it says prior to the pre-construction meeting?
Yep.
I need to follow the, you know, the four items that need to be submitted?
Yep.
So within 14 days of what?
Issuance of the permit.
Of this stormwater management permit.
Of the stormwater management permit.
No, we can approve this this evening, and within two weeks, he'll have to have a meeting and get this information to, it sounds like town engineer.
You're still going to give us the CADs and everything else.
But, but, you want, do you want to have the meeting before they actually do the work, or you, he's saying to provide it after the work?
Provide, provide, I think he's saying the work is kind of already in progress.
I was saying we don't even need a meeting, not, don't have a pre-construction meeting, and if there's no pre-construction meeting, number seven can be changed to 14 days after the issuance of the stormwater permit, as opposed to prior to the pre-construction meeting.
So you're suggesting strike six and reword seven to be within 14 days of the issuance of the permit?
Yes.
We're going to have a pre-construction meeting, though, so, but it's just, just going to be, did you say me and Joe, and maybe Matt, because I think there's a con scum. Yeah, because, I mean, we still need to make sure you, you and your contractor know what it is that you're going to be allowed to do, which I think you're going to talk about next, and construction entrances, all the things that, at least I have a concern. I thought you were asking to waive the pre-construction meeting, because you don't need the board of health, and the fire department, and the police department, and, and the many, the building department that faithfully show up to the pre-construction meeting. So if it were just to be Joe and I, and probably Matt, we'll still have one.
Okay.
I, I mean, so what is the, what is the complication with that, or?
I, it just seemed like, you know, Matt can come out on his schedule, in fact, he might have already been out, I'm not sure, because the hay bales and silt fence, or scrawwattles and silt fence have been up for quite a while now.
So do you want it prior to commencement of construction, or prior to construction of number whatever?
Well, it sounds like Paul wants to, still wants to have a pre-construction meeting.
Yeah, but I'm just, it's 59, and what's the other number?
63.
So prior to commencement of construction of 63 Hildreth, the applicant shall have a, a meeting with appropriate, with engineering, conservation, and planning to review stormwater? Do you want to make it that way?
Yeah, it's actually 59, 63 is already under construction.
Okay, so number 59, you want to do something like that, and that prior to this meeting, the following shall be submitted?
Yeah, yeah, we could do that. I have one other request, and that is, tree clearers are extremely busy, and we've already rescheduled a tree clearer three times, he's on schedule for... He's on schedule for tomorrow morning. So we were wondering if we could at least get in and clear the trees, but not do any grubbing. So just cut the trees, leave everything, and then go on. Because we have the potential of losing a tree clearer for a month or so. And we don't want to have any, there's not a lot to be cleared.
So, you know, thinking back even to Colonel Rawls, we need to have some kind of a construction entrance on Hildreth.
There is this one now.
It's already there. It's in place.
I built it for 63.
Yeah, we just can't be tracking out onto that particular, that road in particular, all roads, but that road in particular.
Yeah, we built that before we started 63.
House number 63 that's being built.
Right.
So would that, so would this affect, which of the conditions would this affect?
I think it would be anything that references prior to construction activity. If the board can just make a determination that tree clearing shall not be considered part of the construction activity, then
But you said erosion controls are already on the site, you said, right?
Yes.
So that handles 12, because you've already done it.
So
I don't know, we can say it's not part of construction, maybe we can, can we waive that or allow it to happen, Jeff, otherwise?
I mean, if it, their, their ask right now is to simply cut trees, but kind of not do any, not really have any substantial land disturbance.
Yeah, they're not doing earthwork.
We're not going to pull the stumps, we're just going to cut the trees, get rid of the trees.
Yep.
Thinking of our subdivision rules and regs discussion that we had last year fall, would tree clearing even fall under something that?
I don't want to complicate this by talking about subdivision rules and regs, that doesn't apply here, so.
Well, no, but I mean, is tree clearing something that we need to have something specific here versus scrubbing?
It's when we established the stormwater management bylaw and targeted the acre of disturbance, we, we want to be accommodating to the, to the people that are building a house. It, they're building two of them and they're big, and so you hit the trigger of one acre. But, and we will keep the project in line in accordance with our bylaw. But it was never really is to hinder the work or the progress or, you know, the development of the lands. It's just, so I thought we would get together, but if you're saying tomorrow morning, that's not going to happen before you do all those things. So we'll have
Yeah, so we could basically leave the schedule, you know, have the pre-construction meeting. It'll be a limited pre-construction meeting, but that doesn't need to change. Nothing else needs to change. If we could just get permission to cut trees tomorrow and leave all the other conditions the same, that's, that works too.
If there is a construction entrance in place and your logger is, has been vocally instructed about tracking material. I mean, they're, they can be the worst offenders, to say bluntly. But I want to make sure that, you know, we're not going to get the phone calls or I'm not going to find something when I drive up there. Otherwise, we don't have a problem with someone, you know, nor as we wouldn't with a private resident cutting down trees on their property.
Maybe we ask Jeff how we can write it.
Well, I was going to say
You could just say, accepting the cutting of trees, which specifically does not include grubbing, you know, we can throw some language in there.
Do we even need to memorialize this into the document? Was it going to be my question?
That's my question, yeah.
Well, I would to protect everyone, I think we should have something.
Okay. Does anybody on the board take issue with the trees coming down prior to the pre-construction? Bob?
No.
No, okay, so I don't think the board has any objections to the, to the activity. So however, we would like to memorialize that into the document, I think acceptable to us. Great.
And then we'll meet prior to any stump.
Yeah, we'll meet, we need to meet before you.
Yeah, before you're doing earthwork, please, let's have the meeting.
Was there, was there a reason you wanted to limit the people that Joe invites to the meeting or?
I didn't really, I didn't want to limit them. I just said, I thought it might be a bit of an overkill for the construction of one house.
Yeah. Don't want to hurt any feelings, so.
Everybody wants to show up, they're more than happy to show up, but
We'll do a normal pre-construction meeting, but, you know, optional attendance.
Sometimes when you get that many people together, it gets more and more difficult to schedule.
Yeah.
If he keeps it in, he has to provide the donuts.
Right, yeah, no, well, I'm sure there are laws, there must be laws about that.
We're really getting into how town government works now. All right, so are there any other changes to the document or any other comments that you have to the stormwater management draft decision?
Condition number 24
Okay.
References condominium association documents.
It does?
Yes, the very bottom line.
Maybe not in the stormwater, hold on.
Oh, wait.
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking in the scenic road one?
In the stormwater?
Stormwater permit, yeah. Referencing the final maintenance agreement being recorded.
Twenty-four?
No.
I don't have that.
You're in a different one.
I have stormwater runoff shall not be directed.
Are they referring to the rain garden or something?
No, I have
I think you're in the first
I don't think there are 24 in the first one, there's only five.
In the stormwater permit?
Is there a common driveway?
Yeah, in the stormwater management permit, you're talking about conditions of approval and you said number 24?
Yeah.
Yep.
Don't hear that. Stormwater runoff shall not be directed to any of the permanent BMPs until the associated drainage areas are stabilized. That's what I have is 24.
That was what was emailed to me.
Okay. Uh-oh.
Final O N M plan.
Document mismatch, mismatch, versioning issues?
Looks like maybe it was corrected after it was emailed.
Why don't you take a look at this one as long as the pattern? See if you have the same concern.
A late, a late catch.
While Mark is searching for that, I would, I can update you on a project. The developer with us tonight is doing the Colonel Rawls project as well. And despite a rocky start or rough start here, we've, they've done a phenomenal job out there. He's kept a good tab on his contractor. And it's a, it's a wet and messy site, but even so, they've been doing a good job out there. We, they're working on the culvert now, they've got their retention system in, we hope to see the road paved soon. They are making good progress out there. And Russ is out there, so he's making sure that it's being done right.
He's camping out there, right?
I think so.
Yeah, I have a much different version.
Oh, sorry about that.
Numbering is a little different, the order is a little different.
I was going to say, do you mind if we go to the board while you look through that? And then we can circle back to you to find out if you have any additional comments before we take action on it? Sure. Great. Anybody on the board have any comments regarding the draft decision either for the scenic roadway or the stormwater management permit?
Other than what we talked about tonight, no.
Nope. Mike?
No.
I just had a typo in the project summary for the scenic bylaw, the second paragraph. The applicant proposes to construct two new 20-foot wide driveway openings feet as part of the construction. I think feet shouldn't be there, and that was all I had.
Thanks, Kate. Bob, do you have any comments on either of the draft decisions for 59 and 63 Hildreth?
No, good.
Great, I am similarly, I'll, I'll set with them. Yeah, anybody here from the public tonight to comment on PB 2213 or 2216, 59 and 63 Hildreth? Mark, and it's just a few of any other items you'd like to discuss?
No, I think, no questions or comments on the rest of them. There's 11 more conditions than what I had, but
More conditions?
Yeah. I think they just reworded differently and renumbered and separated.
It's a bonus.
Yeah, I think, so I'm getting my money's worth, I guess.
They're all standard, a lot of them are standard, so.
Okay, then. Is there a motion to close the public hearing for PB 2213?
Move.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing on PB 2213, 59 Hildreth Street, scenic, what is this? Scenic road permit. All those
And?
Well, I'm only doing 2213, I was going to do 2216. Want to close them both, we could close them both. Is there a motion to, okay, let's close 2213. Motion to close PB 2213, all those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Is there a motion to close PB 2216, stormwater management permit for 59 and 63 Hildreth Street?
Remove.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Is there a motion to approve the decision on PB 2213 for 59 Hildreth Street?
Move.
With
As amended.
As amended this evening, which I don't believe it was.
This is for the scenic road permit?
Oh, no, it was amended, you may add, yes. As amended for grammatical correctness this evening.
Remove.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve PB 2213, all those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Is there a motion to approve PB 2216, the stormwater management permit for 59 and 63 Hildreth Street as amended through discussion this evening?
Remove.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Excuse my stupidity, but what's that thing there?
It's a air filter.
Oh, okay.
Which there's one in just about every office space.
All right.
Are you playing balderdash?
Yeah, no, that thing over there, R2D2?
Oh, this thing she's talking about.
No, 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 this thing.
Yeah, no, it's, oh, I thought you were talking about R2D2.
I just feel, my mind is like, what is that?
Speaker.
Just don't pay any attention.
It's Bob? What is, no, but what is it?
It picks up sound for, it's tied, I think, to the updated audio video system.
Oh, okay.
Does the camera go to the voice too if you're talking? Just refer to it as how. But don't, don't ask them to open the plug, they do. Okay.
All right. The, the next public hearing item in front of us this evening is PB 2215, which is the modification of a stormwater management and a special permit for a flexible development for 85 Carlisle Road and Marie Way, Parker Landing Subdivision. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of Farrell and Robbins. Also with me tonight is Jeff Brem, the project engineer. And the project owners, Lauren Cusano, Don Cusano and Jeff Scenarium. We're here tonight for a continued public hearing. I'll just give you a brief overview of what we've done since the last meeting. And I have to say, the staff has been awesome. Really have worked hard to try to do everything that we set out to do at the last meeting. Everything is done. We've met out on site with engineering, we have comments. Thank the Engineering Department for getting those done so quickly. We've had a conversation and a meeting on site with Lieutenant Parsons. We have his comments, we'll include those conditions in the plan. We've reviewed all of the comments that have come in since the last meeting. We have no issue whatsoever with the proposed conditions from engineering or the proposed requests from Lieutenant Parsons. All are very reasonable. We've gone through the proposed decisions that staff put together. I have a couple issues we can raise, will we go through them? We can do it anyway, like Mr. Chair, if you want to run through, and then when we get to that section, I can bring it up. But I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have as well.
Okay. Great, any comments from town staff, Joe or Jeff?
No, just engineering and the applicant, they've been very cooperative, so it was a team effort, so.
Paul?
I, no, Mr. Chair, not specifically, but I anticipate at some point in the conversation, they're going to talk about doing some work out there. And we've given some consideration to that, and we think there is a path for them to do some reclaiming on the road area as long as they're able to separate out those organics which are the cause of needing to reclaim the road. But I'll leave that to the presentation.
Sure, and the, the condition in the engineering memo points to the roadway. We're actually going to be completely tearing up the roadway. Engineering has been nice enough to say that we can reuse some of the material on site, but as Paul stated, well, there's some trees and some other things that have grown through the pavement. So those will actually have to be removed in order to use any of that back on site. So we appreciate that we may be able to use some of the material if we can fulfill that requirement. I saw the condition in the engineering memo, and we're completely fine with that requirement for reusing anything on site.
Great. Do you have more of a presentation to give this evening about the project?
No, just when we start going through the decision, I can answer any questions the board may have. I think the other thing the board had brought up is about access to the site. It's quite overgrown, just to make sure that we could see properly left and right. Engineering did look at that, and we do have to cut back some of the material on site, some of the trees and the bushes that have grown in. It's a condition in the engineering memo, and we're satisfied with their request.
Yep.
It is in the area, Mr. Chair, of the cistern, which they're going to have to maintain. It's, they're not going to be allowed, the fire department won't allow them to just let it get overgrown again, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, so let's talk about the cistern, there is a cistern already built out there. It was a 10,000 gallon cistern. We looked at it with the fire department, we opened the cover, it's full of water, so that part's good. We don't have to look at it at all, do any work with structural sound. However, the access to it goes up a hill and down a hill a little bit. So we have to grade that out, not a big deal, obviously, that'll be part of the work out in front. And there's no fittings put on there. So we went over the fact that we have to put all, you know, the suction, the pumps and various fittings, none of them are there. We sent the plan design to Lieutenant Parsons, and he's okay with the fittings. He just wants to be there when they go in and inspect it, do his normal thing. So the news is the cistern's there, it's functioning properly, it's just not 100% complete. There is also an issue that you should know about, because you may not know, or these guys may not know about. It's not in the location that was originally on the plan. And that doesn't really mean anything except for we have an easement around it, and the easement needs to move before we've signed the plans. So my, my office has to go locate exactly where it is so that when I draw the easement around it, it's in the right location. That would be done prior to the endorsement of the plans, we just need a new easement over. We should be aware of that. That would be the only thing I think we need to change, other than the comments that were already in the memo that engineering did want some things changed and added and verified on site, and we're good with all those.
Was there a note in here about enlarging it?
Yeah.
Making it larger?
So that's what the lieutenant looked at, he was thinking about if it wasn't built, he would want a 30,000 gallon cistern because the rules have changed since then. But because it's already there, it was originally approved, he was fine with it being 10,000 gallons.
Okay.
Then that's why he sent the, Mr. Chair, that's why he sent the revised memo, I think late last week, saying that he was satisfied with the structure. But he had those requests that he, the access be maintained, that the basin be maintained. And there was also the standard condition in one of your decisions that before the Y turnaround is installed, that he comes out and inspects it at the basic level to make sure that it's set properly. We're satisfied with all of those.
Okay. There was a, there's a letter from town historic requesting maybe some stone walls?
Yes, and that was actually, I think, in your packet for the last meeting. We had submitted the plans to them, they did like the plans, and we're going to continue to work with them to put that wall in the location that they're looking for. It really is going along with the original house, there was a stone wall along that area. So it'll look nice there anyway, once the development's complete.
Okay. Great. Anything else from the applicant then? No?
No, that is all.
All right, let's go to the board for any comments that you may have on this project. Darren?
No, I saw comments were addressed from, you know, fire and engineering, and no, I have no further comments.
Great, Mike?
You guys have answered my questions this evening, sightline was a concern, and I think that's been answered, so.
Great, Kate?
I just had some comments on the, the decisions and I, and on the bond. Because the ones where you have like 273 of something, instead of $40, it's $10. Does that mean you're going to reuse 75% of what's there and only need 10% more? How do, how do we interpret that?
Yeah, so let's go through that. So Jeremy and I went through this, he suggested some changes, so you know, it didn't get, it wasn't submitted and approved right away. We, the arithmetic on the bottom was adjusted. But, exactly, so the curbing is the one you were probably referring to, the granite curbing is
And gravel and stuff.
And gravel, so the idea is to reclaim what's there. Curbing is easy to reclaim, you pick it up, you put it aside, put it back. Some of the gravel, we're expecting most of it to be reclaimed as well. As Paul said, some of it may be deterior, sorry, contaminated by some of the roots and other organic material. And gravel. So, the idea is to reclaim what's there. Curbing is easy to reclaim. You pick it up, it would put it aside, put it back. Uh, some of the gravel, we're expecting most of it to be reclaimed as well. As Paul said, some of it may be deterior- uh, sorry, um, contaminated by some of the roots and other organic material. That would be disposed of and other brought in. So, uh, most of the... And that's why all the asterisks are there, is to use the easy material where we can, and I made some assumptions, and Paul and Jeremy agreed with those assumptions.
It's unusual, though, Kate, because I thought the same thing when I saw it, but it's because generally in Westford, you can't use any recycled material whatsoever, um, and I did speak to engineering about this today, but it's because we have a unique site out here where the material is already there, so we can reuse the material that is actually on the site, um, as long as we can get the organic material out of, out of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
So, we are paying a lot more attention to Form G's now. It's just, uh, it in, in the present climate and economy, we... One never knows when things are gonna change radically and, and the town's gonna inherit the need to do something out there, so we... But we were satisfied with this number. With escalations and the E and R and everything else really gives us a, a good incentive for the developer to finish the project.
Which you all, we all want. It's been sitting here for seventeen years.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So, I don't know, um, on, on the decisions.
Yep.
Let's see. The one, the first decision for the, uh, modification to the definitive subdivision plan, it's just a typo on page two, which is page a hundred in the packet. Uh, here it is. On the record of proceedings, number two, it says, uh, on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, we opened the concurrent public hearings, but we really opened them in May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Kate?
Um, and on the flex development one, page four, which is page one thirteen in the packet, there was a couple of conflicting sentences. Just needed for clarification. Let's see. On page four, on, on the bottom, number one, it, it's talking about the open space, and it says, "This land has been transferred to the town." And then on the next page, number three, it's talking about, um, the rear of lots two and three, but it also mentions the open space parcel. And it says, "The applicant has indicated that this land will not be transferred to the town," so I don't know if you wanna just get rid of the reference to the open space parcel in that condition or something.
Maybe we could check with the applicant. I think the open space land has already been transferred, so we could strike that reference under item three. Kate?
Yeah, just get rid of it. But I don't know if they wanna keep the fact that parts of lots two and three are not gonna be-
Just get rid of these last sentence.
Yeah, yeah.
And the open space, um, Mr. Chair, may have to be reconveyed, so it, it, I'm... And it's a requirement anyway, so I'm fine with the condition staying in there, but the rear, the, and that portion that says the rear of lots two and three, um, won't be conveyed is fine.
Okay.
Okay. The fifty percent of setbacks, I from, I haven't had a chance to review our flexible development bylaw, but is the reference to keeping the fifty percent setbacks, is that because of our flexible development, or is that because of the...
Flexible development, you have that discretion.
Yeah, okay. I just, that's what I figured.
So, we merely ask that the applicant show it graphically on the plans to eliminate possible confusion down the road when the commissioner's looking at, uh, any proposals, so it's clear what the setbacks are in this particular case.
Okay, makes sense. And then, uh, on the stormwater one, on page four, which is page one twenty-two in the packet, just a reminder that it says June XX, so on number three, to connect, make it June sixth.
Yeah, we try to, uh, leave those, you know, in case the board, for some reason, continues, so we'll fix that.
Yeah, and that's all I had.
Great.
Mr. Chair, just while we're on this page, do you mind if the... My only addition that I wanted, um, was to, procedurally at this point, we will have to update the MYLARS. We'll have to come back to the board for the July meeting, and then once the MYLARS are endorsed and everything's recorded, then we would have our pre-construction meeting, and the pre-construction meeting, I think, has to be fourteen days, or they have fourteen days after we actually request it. That's some time out. Uh, the client would like to start removing the existing pavement that's there today, so we wouldn't commence any other site construction, um, or start construction on any of the houses. That would all start after the pre-construction meeting.
Yep.
But we wanted to ask for an exception, that we could start the roadway work, uh, prior to the pre-construction meeting, that, that condition shows up on every single one of these decisions, but in the stormwater, it's, uh, condition six in page, um, page... Yeah, condition six on this page. So, I would just ask that there be an exception placed in here, that roadway demolition can take place prior to the pre-construction meeting, uh, with oversight from the engineering department.
We had talked about this before with the applicant, and don't anticipate any problems. Again, this is provided that they give us the adequate construction entrance and keep materials out of our way. But in, in notice to us, so that we can be present when you're...
So, you'd like condition six under, on the stormwater, um, management permit to read something like, prior to the commencement, of any construction or site work excluding demolition of the existing roadway?
Of the group. Correct.
And reclamation of the materials, perhaps?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you don't, and you don't need that on the others?
I do, will need them. Also, I can cite the staff where those exact same conditions are in the other two decisions, but they're, they're duplicates of this, so I would put the accept, the same except for language in both of those other decisions.
So, just like, like head sanity check of the board. Does the board have any issue with the applicant starting some road, I guess, uh, reclamation, really, right? Uh, Bob, any, any concerns on your side? I'm sorry.
Sure. No, other than, are, are there any controls, erosion controls that must be in place for that?
Yes, and we're actually installing those, so, and we'll make sure that all the erosion controls are in place necessary for the roadway and inspected by staff before doing anything out there.
So, I guess, Joe, it just sounds... Yeah, so, Joe, I guess it sounds like we would just wanna make it clear that, you know, the roadway, I guess, demolition and, and reclaiming the materials is fine, as long as it's overseen by engineering, and we'll trust the town engineering. We'll make sure that erosion controls are in place.
I anticipate that you're gonna remove and stack the curbing on site?
Yep.
So, not, you won't be taking that stuff off of the site?
Correct.
Okay. Great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Um, Kate, had you finished your comment?
I'm done.
Okay. Bob, do you have any comments on any of the draft decisions?
Actually, I have a question, not on the draft decision, but on the letter from, uh, the, uh, Historic Commission Review.
Yes.
And, uh, I agree with the wall. I was a little confused by in there that it sounded like some kind of a farmhouse design might have been presented to the Historic Commission. Is that in fact true?
Yes. Yep, we've submitted the architectural plans, uh, for their review, and they, uh, accepted what we had shown them. Uh, and there was a condition in the previous decision that required that if we couldn't save the house that had previously been on site, which has since been demolished, or move it to another site, that we had to submit, um, a house plan that was satisfactory to the Historic Commission that was a farm-style house. So, it has been reviewed and approved by Historic Commission.
Yeah, no, no, I was, I was involved in that when it was discussed, so I do recall that. That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
And so, I was just wondering if, if... I don't think those plans have been shared with the planning board, though. Is that correct?
I think they may have been copied in the original packet, but I ha- I didn't present them here, no.
Okay.
The building plans are-
So, I'm just making sure to my, my fellow committee members, I wanna make sure that, um, that agreement is reflected in our conditions. I wanna ensure that we capture that in the conditions.
Are we simply referring to the current house that's approved by Historic Commission?
Uh, yeah, I mean, the plans. I mean, they've got art, they've got plans, and I'd like to make sure that, uh, we capture that the, uh, project will be built in, in, in accordance with those plans, 'cause I think if there's any changes to those, uh, and they're not in our conditions, we would not necessarily be able to enforce the conditions of the Historic Commission.
I mean, the architectural plans.
Yeah.
Understood. That's fair game for that lot closes into the road.
Yeah, and the architectural plans are part of the initial application, which is quite large and full of plans, so I can see why, um, it wasn't clear that those were the approved plans from the Historic Commission, but I think at the time I submitted, uh, Historic hadn't sent that letter yet, so I wasn't sure that they're approved. But we're satisfied with an additional condition that says that we, um, we'll restate the original condition, Jeff.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, Bob, that will be added.
Thank you. That's real, that's all my only comment. Um, again, I've been, I've been working this project now for close to, what, eighteen, nineteen years, so what a board didn't realize.
Yep.
Bob, I would say in, in, uh, the, um, the definitive subdivision decision, it does include the floor plans and elevations as part of the material.
I, I think it makes sense to include it in the special permit, one where the board has more discretion, so we'll, we'll take care of that.
Alrighty.
Okay. And I didn't have any specific comments outside of what the board has already offered, so, um, with that, if there's no other comment from town staff? Nope, then anybody here, uh, in the audience tonight to speak to PB twenty-two fifteen, um, eighty-five Carlisle Road? Okay.
Move that we close the public hearing?
Okay, motion to close the public hearing on PB twenty-two fifteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Alright. Do we have to do each of these individually?
No, you can lump them.
I move that we, uh, vote to endorse the draft decisions.
Approve.
Move what?
Approve.
Approve?
Yep.
The draft decisions as discussed tonight, uh, for PB two-two-one-five, eighty-five Carlisle Road, modification of special permit for a flexible development into definitive subdivision and stormwater management permit.
As revised.
As amended this evening with our comments and the board's discussion. Yeah, great. Second. Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you very much.
Great. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, as you move into your general business, um, I, I was planning to make good my escape, but, uh, be under general business. I've gone through with the planner and the director the proposed mitigations and, uh, find them fair and acceptable to the engineering department, uh, but Jeff is more familiar with my comments if you need anything else.
Okay.
If you don't mind, though, before it gets dark.
Don't mind. That's fine. Uh, we are gonna take a brief recess, so three minutes, five minutes, whenever Kate gets back. Uh, thank you for that.
Good.
I'll take a day.
See you on Saturday.
Yes, maybe. Assuming I can get out of New York City on Friday evening and it's not sound.
New York City?
New York City. I go, I go Wednesday to Friday.
I think it might just be the, the flat architectural plan, but that one, the houses actually, oh, you mean the one orientation of the house base. Value. No, but the house may be around, or maybe the garage may be around, but I'm not sure. I don't know.
I couldn't figure out the orientation of that one.
Right. What's funny is that I never knew that was there, and I go to Parker Village with my kids.
Well, it hasn't been there in a while, but it was.
That's where I see like-
It's gotta be accessible. You gotta be careful.
No, it was just put in, right?
Yeah.
It has tons of lilacs in the front.
It's over, and they, they play funny games though. I know the town engineer.
And I don't know how or why. I, I don't know either.
Alright. Joe, you're well-prepared with the, the next graphic for us. It's great. Let the architect-
Darren, alright?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, Bob, are you, uh, are you with us? Alright, I... We're gonna, sorry, we're gonna come to order again. Alright, great. Um, so that concludes the public hearing items for this evening. We move on to general business, and we start with topic A, which is PB eighteen thirty-four. Um, the applicant for the sixty Littleton Road project, also known as the Helena Crocker Residences, uh, the applicant is requesting the approval of the final landscaping plan for the project. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. Sorry, I told Scott to get up here too early. Scott's not on the project. I'm here tonight for S E G Development, uh, for the Helena Crocker Residences. Uh, there was a requirement in the permit that we just come back to the board, so they could see the final landscape plan. And you know what? There is a final landscape plan, but I gave you three sheets, just because they all show a little something different. This is the general landscape plan. You can see the areas that are gonna be landscaped along the front of the building. Uh, there's a main landscaping right at the front of the building, uh, just because I can't see the north-south, I'm going to say. If you're street-side looking left, there is a planted area right in front of the building. There is a sign. And then there's, that row of trees there that Joe was just pointing to are actually just to cover the, uh, electrical area there that's between the building and the roadway, so that will look nice. Uh, behind the building, that will be all loomed and seeded. Uh, to the rear of the building, what you're looking at right there is actually a patio area. It's a weird crosshatch, just because the wetland resource area is also shown there as well. Uh, that will be, uh, standard New England wildflower seed mix. That's been chosen by the Conservation Commission in that area, so that will be very nice behind that patio area. Uh, the pavers you see right there are actually pervas- pavers for the fire truck turnaround, uh, but just to try to block some of that area from the building, you can see that there's a couple landscaped areas to the rear. We pulled those back as tight as we could, uh, given our limitations for conservation. As you're coming up to the right side of the building there, just on the other side, that's all gonna be, uh, loomed and seeded as well. I know you can see some construction area, but that's actually all going to be grass. Uh, the front of the building, although the, it will be mostly sidewalks, there is a handicap ramp, um, the big crosshatched area in the middle is actually a drop-off area. Uh, and then, instead of putting landscaping in front, because there's windows there, and I understand now that residents like to have the front windows, 'cause they can see what's going on and who's coming and going, uh, what they agreed to do instead was to use bollards. That would also be used for a safety purpose, uh, but they'll be landscaped on top, and that was one of the reasons I gave you the other sheet, is you could see that the landscaped bollards, although they do not show up on this, uh, landscape plan, they are shown on that sheet one oh one. Uh, they said it is, it's this one. So, you can, can't, you can see that there's going to be the landscaped bollards installed along the front of the building, and I think that will look lovely. Um, and really, that's a general overview of the landscape plan. It's pretty straightforward. I just wanted to make sure the board had an opportunity to see it. Uh, we're very excited to get going out here. Uh, we actually have requested our pre-construction meeting. Mickey's very happy, uh, so we're very, very happy that we have funding, and this is all moving forward, and construction will start very soon. Um, so, but I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Great. Awesome. Thank you. Darren, any comments on the landscaping plan?
No, looks consistent with what we talked about initially, so it was great.
Mike?
Good.
Kate?
None, I just thank you for your perseverance, and it's been a long time. I know, getting the funding and such, and getting the state approval, so good work for you.
It's exciting.
And so, when, so when are you gonna start?
Uh, this actually starts in Ju- well, we have a projected state start time right now, the last week in June, um, but we have pre-construction, I think, next-
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth, yeah, so within a couple of weeks of that. I mean, really, we're starting to get ready and get organized to get out there, so it's very exciting.
Great.
Bob, any comments on the landscaping plan for, uh, sixty Littleton Road?
Yeah, I, I did have one question. Looking at the plan, I noticed the conservation signs- I, I did have one question, looking at the plan, I noticed the conservation signposts that are placed on the eastern side of the property, I didn't notice any others on the southern side, is that correct?
That's correct, they were, it's clear, there's a very clear demarcation to the rear of where it ends, and I know it's probably hard to see, but there is a landscape planting area, and then the pervious pavers, and then it ends, so that there is a very clear line of where the, where the conservation area starts back there, but over to the grass side, it goes grass to a graded area to a tree line, so it's not clear over there, so conservation have requested we put a sign in, and that's, it was easy to do, so we did agree to put a sign on that area where it's not clear.
Okay, no, thank you, I appreciate that, that's all.
Great, thanks Bob, yeah, and I think the plan looks great, I mean, it's a, it's a fairly tight site, and there's a good amount of hardscape, so I think you guys have done a really nice job doing what you can with the site to add quite a bit of landscaping to it, so, nice job.
I forgot to mention to Bob's point too, that there is a retaining wall.
Yeah.
That runs, I'm looking, it's right in my face, so I just figured I should mention, it actually runs as an L, so there is a very clear demarcation of where the conservation area is right there.
Right. Is there a motion to approve the final landscape plan for the PB eighteen thirty-four Helena Crocker Residences at sixty Littleton Road?
Move.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the landscape plan, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Appreciate all your efforts.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you. I'm staying still. One more.
The next general business topic is item B, it is PB nineteen twenty-four, site plan review, stormwater management permit, twenty-one and twenty-three Carlisle Road, Balsam Circle, requesting a discussion and possible action prior to condition of approval pertaining to the proposed sidewalk on Carlisle Road, hello again.
Hello again, again for the record, attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of Farrell and Robbins, here tonight with Scott Clark, as the board may be aware, there's a condition in your permit that states that we can either build the sidewalk or do a payment in lieu of the sidewalk, I generally wouldn't come present to the board, I would just deal with the bond, but I just wanna let, let you know, we really did try to build the sidewalk, it's become very, very difficult, the area, there is enough area between Carlisle Road and the roadway layout in order to put the sidewalk, but as we tried to put it in and deal with engineering issues, it just was not possible to put the sidewalk in, the biggest issue is it is already a flooding issue at the end of Liberty Way, and when we put in our sidewalk, it was actually going to exacerbate that flooding issue, and the only way to deal with it is to get an easement on the private property, which is a residential property, if you're coming out of Liberty Way and taking a right, there's another private residential property right there, and we could not get that easement, the Liberty Way condo association was willing to work with us, but we couldn't obtain the other easement, we tried to do one more design, work through it, and see if we could make the drainage work without them, and we could not, so it's unfortunate, so I think you saw my unusual request, we did get a bond number here from a third-party engineer, I know Mr. Starette said the, he agreed with it, but we're asking it to be rounded down, only because we already did spend a significant amount of money trying to actually build the sidewalk, so we're asking for a payment in lieu of forty thousand dollars, which isn't the full amount that we've paid out, but we just think it's a reasonable amount to take off the bond, given that we've actually tried out here.
Yep.
Hopefully it can get picked up in the town's next master plan to go down Carlisle Road, I know that is the ultimate plan, so hopefully when it gets down to that point, they can pick up the flooding issue and deal with it, going from Liberty towards one-ten, but we can't deal with it as private developers, despite Mr. Clark's efforts.
Yeah.
Towards it, so I'm here tonight just to request the board allow us to do the payment in lieu of forty thousand dollars.
Great, Darren, any comments?
No, I appreciate the work and the effort in trying to get the sidewalk in, but, you know, obviously, running into a stone wall there, so I, I agree, I think you guys, best efforts, you put a lot of work into trying to get the sidewalk actually in.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm happy with that forty thousand dollar number.
Mike?
I agree with Darren.
Kate?
Thanks for trying, I know pedestrian safety, this whole road is a very difficult with easement issues, and, and did you run the numbers by engineering?
Yes, that was what Mr. Starette was saying on his way out, he didn't wanna stay for the meeting, but he said he was satisfied with the numbers.
He was satisfied.
Yeah, okay, great.
I can confirm that.
Yeah.
And I do wanna say, I think the town did benefit from their efforts, because they got some more detailed information about some of the problems that they have to address with their consultants, so, not only are we getting some good money, but we also have some more detailed knowledge that we did not have before their efforts, so, thanks.
Not all the effort was in vain.
No, they, we learned some things.
Bob, any comments on the, on the fee?
I think Jeff may have addressed my one concern, and that was, since we in effect are paying the fifty-nine hundred dollars, have we received the technical hearing product and results, that resulted from that expenditure of funds?
Well, Paul is not here to speak to that directly, but my opinion, based upon the numerous conversations and the detailed examinations of solving drainage in the right-of-way and outside of the right-of-way, I think engineering is in a far better place than they were before this project, so.
Yeah, and we've given them all the plans, we've given them all of our detailed engineering information, we've gone back and forth with the drainage, and we're happy to give them any other plans that they would like in that area, so, it won't be in vain, and I think that if there is good information that was as a result of this.
Got it. So, Joe?
So, yeah, so my update, I request all such, all plans that were produced be delivered to the town, and, and I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay, thanks Bob, and I similarly, I would echo Bob's comments, I think that's fine.
Yes.
Joe, procedurally, what are we, what are we, what are we doing here, are we approving this fee in lieu of, or do we have to amend the initial decision, what are we doing?
Sorry, I'm on the hook for this one.
Oh, okay. Trying to defer to Joe.
So, you're, you're simply approving the fee in lieu as adjusted by, as discussed tonight, so you're just setting the value.
Is there?
Because I have that right to go that option in the first place.
Great, is there a motion to approve forty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollar gift to the sidewalk fund in town, in lieu of construction of a sidewalk for PB nineteen twenty-four, with the condition, as Bob stated this, this evening, to provide any engineering work that was done to try to construct the sidewalk to the town?
I move.
Second. Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Muddy hair. Have a good night.
Yep, you too. Okay, that brings us to general business topic C, which is the electric vehicle working group, providing an update pertaining to proposed bylaw amendments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is the board. I'm trans true chair of the EV charging stations working group as formed by the planning board, and I'd just like to give you an update on our progress here, give you a quick summary, and then make a request at the end.
Excellent.
Okay, well, one of the charges was to take a look at the need for charging stations in town, and we didn't have to do too much work, because just explosive, big shot, I mean, a big shot in the arm here of sales of EVs across the country, just in the first quarter, we have data for, EV sales shot up sixty percent of all new car sales, whereas new car sales dropped eighteen percent, we have approximately three-point-four million vehicles registered throughout the country, and only four-point-six percent are EVs, and that has projected to grow even bigger, greater, because of this last hour quarter's statistics on EV sales. So, that took care of one of the charges, an easy charge there, so, let me first take this opportunity to thank the working group here, we've got a bunch of really diligent, hard-working folks here, we've got Jerry DeBillo, Jeremy Arnold, Tom Teller, and Bob Schaffer here, who stayed up quite late on our meetings here, so, I'd like to thank this group there, they really put in a, a big effort here in the eight months that the, the group has been together, so our approach was to take a look at the charge from the planning board, and then structure our research around that, we've gotten recently advice from town council that we should not really try to do anything with residential units, or anything associated with residential unit, the group had high hopes that we could sort of coerce, not coerce, mandate charging stations in private residences, but the town council said, hey, in order for any of our recommendations to pass, we, we really should not talk about residential units, so that took a big chunk out of the principal uses in the zoning bylaws here.
Does that include, like, apartment buildings?
Yes. Yeah. Any multifamily's units there, we, we'll let go for later time, because the state will talk about residential units there, as we move forward to net zero twenty-fifty, not too many years left, so, and we got the charge, and we took a look, we did quite a bit of research, we looked at a lot of municipalities, various municipalities across the country, they took a couple of approaches here, whether they set up zoning specifically for electric vehicle charging stations, or if they integrated any zoning amendments into the current zoning bylaws, so we've taken that approach there, how we can integrate any proposed amendments into our current zoning bylaws, have to thank Sierra and Bob there for a lot of guidance there, and helping us with a bunch of neophytes here in the zonings, both Bob and Sierra were considerably helpful in that respect, so we looked at a lot of municipalities there, we looked at the, the building and electrical codes, we looked at the, the MUTCD, the manual for uniform traffic signal, signs, and we looked at what the ADA would require for accessibility, and we got some input from the business community with a, with a terrific amount of help from the EDC, the Economic Development Committee there, they helped us quite a bit, and getting input from the business community, so we have arrived at some proposed amendments, we're talking about amendments that affect the, in the zoning, current zoning, the definitions, appendices A, B, and D, so what we plan to do is, we would like for the, for your July eighteenth meeting, we'll try to get you in advance our proposed amendments, and this is in hopes that you'll take a look at it and support an amendment, or amendments to the zoning bylaws for the October special town meeting, so if we get these to you by July, your July meeting, I hope that's sufficient time to get the public hearings and your reviews, and whatever else that needs to be done, so that you can sponsor these amendments to the town meeting, so, any, any questions of what we've tried to do?
Oh, that sounds good, I mean, we have a, I mean, we generally like to keep those meetings open for two, public hearings for two meetings, right Jeff, so I mean?
Yes.
If we open a public hearing on July eighteenth with, I mean, that gives us plenty of time before October to?
Well, I don't, I, I think the working group would be bringing back their proposal to you to discuss on the eighteenth, that wouldn't be the start of a public hearing.
Okay.
Because you don't have, you don't have that language, we need a bunch of things for that to happen.
True.
I think it does make.
I, I think, I would say, I think the intent here is to get the planning boards in court.
Right.
Prior to public, public, publicly publishing the notice.
Right, that makes, that makes sense.
Yep, but, don't we need to get town councils involvement?
Oh yes, so, town councils had a lot of involvement so far, so if we have, I know Sierra has that, will have that draft language, working with you folks, we'll vet that through council.
Okay.
Try to have that.
Okay, so the language that we're gonna get is gonna have been sort of pre-screened, if you will, by town council?
If timing allows, yes.
Okay, great.
We're only talking about commercial properties, and AMCPs, yeah, basically, commercial, industrial.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great.
So we worked up the amendments, proposed amendments, to be from whatever the parking requirements are for these projects here, that we would take a percentage of those parking requirements, for example, it's the last example, the Makepeace Road, you had sixty-eight parking spaces, so we would take a percentage of sixty-eight and propose that, say, ten percent would be devoted to EV charging stations.
Yep.
Installed charging stations, so.
Gotcha.
We have some funding sources or grants that, that these industrial and commercial operations can try to tap into, so they won't have to bear the full burden of the, the charges, so, we'll try, we'll provide a table of those sources, so that any commercial establishments there that need to get the funding, which they, from the feedback I've gotten, they, that was a major obstacle to provide charging stations, it's just the cost of such.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, that sounds great.
No, in your research, you said, what, there was eighteen million cars in the US, and what, four percent?
Three-point-four, three-point-four million cars.
And how many, what percentage are electric vehicles right now?
Four-point-six percent.
Alright, so I wonder, how many vehicles are registered in Westford, I'm just curious?
Twelve-hundred, twelve-hundred electric vehicles, we have fifty charging stations, it's hard to project how many charging stations we need, because in a town like Westford, most of those charging stations are in homes, so of the twelve, offsetting that though, is that during the day, our population of twenty-four thousand people, and this is from a business group here in Route Three, the Route Three Quarter, they say, could easily increase fifty to seventy percent, just by having employees, visitors, shoppers, or something like that.
Sure.
And we only have fifty charging stations, so, there's a vast need, if we can motivate some of these commercial properties to install a charging station, we'll be on the road to twenty-fifty.
Yeah, great, alright, looking forward to seeing the, the work in, in July then, sounds exciting.
Hey, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much for your effort.
Thank you.
For channing this, this working group.
Thanks.
Alright.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you, Charles.
Alright, look forward to that in July.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, sure.
I assume, Emily Teller, Nine Texas Road, I assume there would be a placeholder on the special town meeting warrant for this, because it sounds like it's gonna be close in terms of timeline, you know, July, August, September, so.
Uh, this, shortly before our annual town meeting, I might get my head ripped off if we start talking about placeholders, we usually don't do that until after we've had the previous town meeting.
I know.
So when the town meeting timeline gets published for the special town meeting, that's when we'll start putting in the placeholder requests.
And that wouldn't happen till Ju, I mean, after the July meeting, I'm thinking after July, not now.
Oh, okay, I thought you were.
So, no, when it comes back in July, you know, you're not gonna have a public hearing, then you're gonna have to have two public hearings, and so I'm saying, in July, yeah, okay.
I just can't ask in, in June right now.
No, I get that, I get that, and also, I mean, it would be nice, as you hear stuff, and I know you probably can't do anything formal, but, I just went out and talked to Mr. Clark, and said, you know, would you think about putting in the infrastructure for EV charging stations, not putting in the stations, but putting in the, the structure while you're working on it, and Melissa said, well, you know, with federal money, there might be a requirement for that, so she's gonna check into it, but, it might be nice, like the make-piece thing, you know, I thought about, obviously my husband's on the subcommittee, and we have a charger in our driveway, and we have an EV, so, I thought about saying, you know, could any of those be dedicated during the building to the infrastructure, not the charging station, but, while you're doing that, but, anyway, I know you have to abide by the laws, but, the suggestions are good.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, okay, that brings us to general business topic D, which is discussion about possible zoning bylaw amendments for accessory dwelling units, commercial recreation overlay district, and creation of a tiered site plan review system, Joe?
So for accessory dwelling units, it was sent to council following meeting with this board and the zoning board of appeals.
Yep.
They really didn't have much comment at all, it was just within three-point-three-point-four, number one, to add some clarification to what we were talking about in terms of the word size, what directly were we referring to? So that's what the additions in blue are. So that's what the additions in blue are, talking about not exceeding the gross floor area, the footprint, or the height of the primary dwelling unit. And then later on again, from the maximum gross floor area or footprint. So just adding a little bit of specificity there, otherwise, no comments from town council on it.
You guys stump the lawyers. Good job.
Not me.
Okay.
So that was, that's pretty, I think, quick update.
Do you want us to, should we go item by item? That way we check them off the list. Great. Does the board have any comment on the language in the accessory dwelling unit section?
Makes sense.
I did on page one fifty-four in the packet. The B there, within ninety days of when the premises is no longer used as the owner legal residence, but the property is not transferred, shall submit a new affidavit to the Board of Appeals. So what does that mean?
They move and rent it out?
They move, they've moved, but they haven't sold it?
So they're renting it out?
They're renting it.
So now they're renting a two-family instead of a single-family residence? So they've no longer...
Because the ADU necessitates that the owner lives on the premises.
No, but what's this, within ninety days of when it's no longer used by them, but the property is, I just didn't understand, I didn't understand the context.
If they start renting, within three months, they need to go before the Board of Appeals and essentially submit...
Right, because no longer an ADU, it's now a multifamily.
Right.
But it says, but the property, oh, but instead of, but it should be, and the property is not transferred ownership, is that what you mean?
So sometimes there can be a delay or a gap, so...
I see what you're saying.
So someone could live in either the primary or accessory dwelling unit and they change their legal residence to their location, it starts a window of time that they have to sort things out. And so one of the issues we have always had with the zoning board with these ADUs is it's chicken and egg. So for instance, no one can apply to the zoning board until they are the legal owner, they can make an affidavit about a property that they do not yet own. And so a lot of times, they can't actually legally do what is required until they are the property owner. And so this gives a limited opportunity that we thought was a reasonable compromise of three months to get their ducks in a row, deal with that, and get the updated paperwork, and give the zoning board some flexibility to administratively, without a new public hearing process, to continue to legitimize the ADU. Because that has been a problem where people have come in, they bought the house that has the ADU, they're all using it legitimately, there are zero changes, but yet they were still required to have another public hearing process to approve what is unchanged, if that makes sense.
So which is, which is the owner, the old owner or the, which owner is being referenced here?
I think Kate made a good point. Should that first but be an and? So within ninety days of when the premises is no longer used as the owner's legal residence and the property has not transferred ownership, as opposed to but.
Is it, and is it the owner who moved out or is it the owner who's waiting to move in?
No, see, my problem here with simply doing an and, that is actually less, I think, restrictive. And so if they are not using it, even if it doesn't transfer...
Who's they?
Say the current owner, lives in the primary.
The current owner.
Let's just say the primary. And say, they no lo-, they, they changed their residency, say they're there five months a year, and say they're living somewhere else seven, they could still own it.
But they still own it, but they still own it.
That is no longer, they are not, no longer using that as their primary dwelling it or even accessory dwelling. That's in violation of the intent of the bylaw. So if you put in an and, that actually means that they could not live there, not use it as their primary or accessory, and that it doesn't trigger that.
Yeah.
But you're saying somebody who owns it but is not a legal resident because they're less than six months or whatever out of the year, so they're, this isn't their legal resident. This makes it sound like they can go to the ZBA and say, well, I'm not, I'm not living there, but I wanna, I want this to, I want to keep both of them as rental property.
Right. And it says that, but the board may consider further action up to and including termination. So if they say, well, I'm not living here, my handicapped son is, the ZBA can say, okay, well, the general intended family in there, the primary owner isn't the primary resident, and continue on with allowing the ADU.
Right, right.
If something takes a special permit to authorize this, there's no administrative action, in my opinion, that can allow them to be contrary to the requirements of the zoning bylaw.
I...
If you would like us to have council look at the and versus but, we can do that.
Yeah, because I'm, like, I, I just, I don't understand it and it's like I get conflicting senses and even here...
So we'll have council look at the...
And what's the intent and what's, you know, and what, what are the possible outcomes of whatever is supposed to happen?
Okay, we'll clear that up with council.
Yeah.
Yep. That should be a short review.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Uh-huh. But then you have to make the grammar so that I can understand it.
Okay, so Bob, any discussion on the ADU document?
Just had one comment in addition to what's already been discussed. And in three dot three one, item two, I think we need to work on the grammar. I understand the intent of the three objectives of sharing space, providing affordability, and sharing the burdens of homeownership. But I think there are some missing words, kind of along the lines of what I just said, to share space, increase affordability, and share the burdens of homeownership.
Yeah. I will say that...
It's written, it's not comprehen-, it's not comprehensible.
Yeah, I will say, that was the one thing when I read it, it did read very awkwardly to me. I finally got there when I sort of like literally did the sentence breakdown, but I do agree that putting increase in front of affordability would help that sentence.
And share the home ownership.
And, oh yeah, and share the burdens of homeownership. Yeah, I can see that as well.
Those are easy fixes.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, we can do that.
Thanks, Bob. All right.
Yep.
Any further comments by the board?
No.
All right, I think we're very close on that one.
All right.
How exciting.
Great, all right, so we move on to the second one. Joe?
Actually, Jeff does all the...
That's me, sorry.
Oh, Jeff, yes, the crud, the crud.
So we'd like to respectfully suggest that the board consider the possibility of creating an overlay district for commercial recreation specifically to benefit Kimball's, Kimball Farm and Nishoba Valley ski area. So if you're not familiar, if you look at this sketch, only the first two hundred feet of, I'll say, Kimball's proper is in the commercial highway zoning district, which is the only place in town, commercial highway zoning district, that the indoor-outdoor commercial recreation use is allowed with benefit of special permit from the zoning board of appeals. So every time that they go and they want to make a change or something different in the commercial highway, they usually need either a special permit or a modification to a special permit, which is then followed up with a planning board public hearing process. And that doesn't account for all of the property that's not CH. So there's a large chunk of Residence A, and there's a lot of development that's in there, and those are largely with benefit of use variance. So they, once again, they go to the zoning board, they either get a use variance, they modify the use variance, they come back to the planning board for another public hearing process. So there, attorney has approached us about some long-term planning issues. They'd like to think about the long term, which we think is good and healthy. But from a permitting perspective, in many cases, they're coming out of the gate as a prohibited use. And so given their longstanding history with the town, many decades, I don't know how many public hearing processes, it seems to at least right to ask the question, does it make sense to have a special permit process where the planning board is the special permit granting authority? That would have the number of public hearings, it gives greater discretion to authorize, it seems consistent with what has been going on there for many decades. And I just think it would really streamline permitting for, for Kimball Farms. So I think it's, we are obligated to at least ask the question. And then Nishoba is actually a worse situation because most of their developed property isn't even in the commercial highway zoning district. So a lot of their use there really stems from an initial use variance granted, I forget what year it's in the packet. So, and that's kind of stretched at the maximum. And without going into too much details, you know, they're also trying to think about making some changes perhaps, or at least looking, exploring long-term options. And once again, they come out of the gate as a prohibited use. And so my sense is that they could benefit from bridging the gap between their peak seasons. They have certain portions of the year that they literally have nothing going on. I know that presents its own challenges. And no matter where you stand on, say, climate change, the fact of the matter is there, it is more inefficient, more expensive in order to maintain snow cover throughout their ski season. So I know they would, they need to be exploring other ways to make their, their business successful. And I think an overlay district like this makes a lot of sense. And I think it still gives, it could be this board, a lot of discretion to evaluate any possible negative impacts and gives you opportunities to mitigate what could be detrimental impacts. I think it's at least worth considering. We appreciate any questions you might have.
Sure. Mike, did you have any, any, the crud?
I don't have any questions. I'm certainly supportive of it.
Yeah, Darren?
Yeah, likewise, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, Kate?
I can really see it for the ski area, just the way it is and what they do and such. And I probably making snow isn't, it's not viable for, getting not viable the way the climate is. I do have an issue with Kimball's. I can appreciate them wanting to make it easier. But there is that large tract in the back, and right now it's chapter sixty-one, but whichever letter sixty-one it is. And so easy, the payments are very minimal to get it out of sixty-one. But the traffic there is horrendous already. And I'm kind of hesitant about making it easier for them to, to add. I could see it if, if the traffic is a really big part of a special permit process. There's also the sensitivity of that area with all the wetlands in Nishoba Brook and such, that I just hate the thought of them. There were an overlay, I would want a really big limit on percent impervious. Victor?
So can I just...
And things like that.
Understood. So in some cases, there could be resource areas that is already going to be kind of practically off limits when it comes to conservation commission review. So would you be more concerned about percentages or performance in terms of protecting certain areas and only looking at certain types of development in certain portions of the site? Do you know what I mean? Like maybe there could be more outdoor recreation in areas that you are more sensitive?
Tough question. To me, performance and percentages are kind of tied together. I mean, research showing how the degradation in, in water quality as percent impervious increases and such, that even just because you put in some nice infiltration systems and detention basins, that, does that really mitigate the impervious? I don't know. It's a tough one. I mean, I appreciate what they're doing. I just, being a neighbor, I'm just sensitive to their creep.
Thank you. If the board is amenable, we would certainly look at protective standards and features and considerations for those.
Okay, any comments from Bob?
Sure.
Do you have any comments on the, the concept of the, the crud?
Crud?
Uh-huh. No, I mean, the only thing that begged the question was, I was reading about the background and appreciated everything there. And I was just curious about permitting history for Kimball, which didn't get summarized in the background.
It's a very lengthy, it's a very lengthy permitting history that involves use variances, special permits, other special permits, I think to change or extend pre-existing non-conforming uses, modifications to special permits, modifications to variances, and subsequent public hearings with planning board, a lot for site plan review. So I don't know how many public hearings exactly there were, but I'm estimating roughly ten plus or minus, could be more.
At least.
It could be in the teens.
But I'm gonna guess those date back to what, the nineties or later? They, they don't go as far back as Nishoba, is that correct?
I'd have to check that because that's, that's tricky because some of those uses at Kimball's were pre-existing non-conforming. But we can certainly check that. Something that we would do, if the board had interest, we would do a lot more research. We're just trying to get high-level input from you folks to see if you have appetite for something for this.
Bob, how's your update?
Yeah, Bob, I'm very interested.
You are? I'm sorry, Bob.
Yes, I am.
Yeah. I'm, I am also interested, I mean, I agree with Mike and Darren's point. I think something like this is needed. I think, I'm actually, I'm very mindful of what Kate mentioned, and I guess it would be helpful to sort of understand some of the history of how we got to where we are today with, with the Kimball's property.
Sure.
You know, I think great communities are built on more than just, you know, subdivisions. And I think, you know, both Nishoba Ski and, and Kimball's, you know, offer some great amenities to the town of Westford. Yeah, I would definitely be interested in understanding a little bit better how, how Kimball's, you know, kind of got to the state that it's in now. That history would be of definite interest. Because maybe we can think about this overlay district in a way that we can ensure that there are controls in place so that, you know, delicate portions of the parcel are maintained in a way that aren't detrimental to the environment or to the welfare of the community in general, but allows both of these organizations and, you know, companies to remain viable for years to come so that future, future residents of Westford can benefit the same way all of us have from those two properties. Great?
Plus, it's not just a Westford thing. I mean, they're, they're, they're Boston all the way out. So it's, it's, no, they're...
No, they, yeah, you're right.
They're benefiting, you know, Westford is paying for their attraction to...
Taxing is tough, too.
Deploying our people.
And if people are, and if people are coming to Westford to, to, to use those, they're in theory potentially spending dollars with other businesses in town. So it's a, that's a, you know, it's a two-way street cake.
Yep.
Can you make a motion?
Yes, please.
I move that we vote to authorize planning staff...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
We have one more. Don't, do we have something else?
We're, we're handling each of the breakouts individually. So it sounds, I mean, I think we've heard enough to give staff instruction to continue the work, yeah? That's what you're gonna put forward?
Great. I move that we vote to authorize planning staff to reach out to the potentially affected property owners and to work with town council, prepare a draft zoning bylaw amendment for consideration by the board that creates a commercial overlay district in support of Kimball Farm and then Nishoba Valley ski area.
Second. Before we vote, the one thing I was going to ask, did, did you want to comment something?
Well, it sounded like the board wanted first to have more historical information, but I don't know.
I didn't get the ball rolling, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna take action on it one way or the other. I think it's, the motion is fine. The one thing I was going to ask, and I forgot this in my comments, are these the only two parcels, parcels we should be considering for this? Or should, should there be a slightly...
Yeah, I was wondering if this is like spot zoning?
Well, yeah, well, if we're talking about an overlay district, are there other areas along the One Ten Quarter that we should think about? Well, yeah, if, well, if we're talking about an overlay district, are there other areas along the 110 corridor that we should think about for this? There are other overlay districts we are considering that are broader in scope.
So, there's a couple of things. So, recently I, I did have some preliminary conversations with some representatives from Recreation Commission. And in my opinion, as it turns out, as you may or may not be aware, they are proposing a recreational facility. They'd like to have one, and all of the properties that they have suggested thus far, I believe, would be prohibited because they are not in the commercial highway zoning district.
Right.
This is not, that was not the intention of this. This was for Kimball's and Nishoba. But once you have an overlay district, if the purpose is consistent with the, the intent, you know, it is certainly possible, and I would be surprised if they did not ask for their top site, wherever that is, maybe off Farmer's Way, to be added to an overlay district. That's certainly a possibility. But there are also, there's another property, not on Littleton Road, but where there may be some existing indoor court facilities, perhaps on Liberty Way. Maybe you're familiar with?
Perhaps.
Perhaps, that folks have been inquiring about that. And can that be used as a indoor commercial recreation?
Sure.
Component. And it's like, that's actually very difficult permitting-wise.
Right.
Uh, the way our zoning bylaw is right now. And it's like, it's an existing facility.
Right.
And so it, there could be, there could be some permitting challenges for even that existing indoor space. So, um, that's one of the things that we're looking at. And it seems like more and more people are certainly interested in recreational, whether indoor and out. And so it is a shortcoming, I think, of our, of our bylaw. It only allows it in one zoning district. And it seems like if you have a special, special permit granting authority, maybe they should have a little more discretion case-by-case basis to see what might make sense. But we wanted to at least start by keeping it fairly limited, uh, because it, you know, it's, it's a big change.
Thank you for reminding me. That was, one of my comments was because you're doing this for the benefit of specific property owners, does that make it spot zoning, which is not something? And are there other ways, like changing things in the use, allowed uses to?
Yeah.
To, to, to come up with the same, a better thing so that other parcels that could?
So it is possible. You could simply change the use table. That would be far more reaching, where you could add districts, where you could designate, rather than say zoning board, planning board is a special permit granting authority, but that would then open it up to a lot more areas in town. And if that's the desire, that, you know, so be it. I don't believe this would be considered spot zoning, but of course, with any overlay, we always check with council. Usually it's relatively small parcels of land, couple acres or so or less. Each of these is, you know, wildly larger than that. And it would be to the perceived detriment of the abutting property owners. I mean, you look at what Kimball's is now, you look at Nishoba, you know, is there possible for expansion or growth if such a bylaw were in place? Yes, it's possible. Is it, I mean, it's?
Is twenty-two Town Farm Road not commercial recreation at this point?
No, it is not. That is with benefit though of use variance because that was sort of a pre-existing non-conforming situation. So they got there through a different way.
Yeah, yeah.
But not everyone has the same foothold of a pre-existing non-conforming use.
No, I, and I understand that.
So they're not in it, but?
I know. I just think, you know, my friendly amendment to Mike's motion would just be to, to set, to not limit it to only the Nishoba Valley Ski and Kimball Farm parcels. But, you know, to rather look at this as something where if what we're saying is that the town of Westwood would benefit from having places where people who want to put in commercial recreation facilities, we should consider that holistically, not just for potentially two parcels. Yeah?
Absolutely.
Totally happy to do that. I'm just wondering if this ever makes its way to town meeting, if we could, if there could be a way to simply vote on a district and then separately look at the individual tracts of land. Because it's possible that there could be some tracts that folks don't have issue with. But there could be other tracts that could be a lot of opposition.
Sure.
And so there could be a way to, you know, separate, who knows what's gonna be a problem for town meeting. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So we could approach it that way and that way.
If you're gonna do, people are gonna wanna see the tracts of land.
No, I understand. But I mean, if there was just one vote, say you have ten different parcels of land. If you take all the, the folks who may be opposed to all of them and you add it up, maybe that is what prevents a two-thirds majority. But if you looked at the tracts of land, and maybe one of them is a, is a real problem for, who knows? And that gets removed from the addition to an overlay district, then maybe you can get a two-thirds for the remainder. You know what I mean? So that, there could be ways that we could attack that. But we're happy to look at that. We're happy to try some surveys and see who?
Yeah.
Parcels for consideration, so.
Yeah, I mean, at least in my mind, I'm not going that far off of the 110 corridor, at least in my mind.
Okay.
You know, but I'm, I'm thinking of other parcels that are on the 110 corridor that could conceivably, that are large enough that could potentially benefit from an overlay district that would allow for commercial recreation. I can think of a couple parcels. So, okay, you do that. Great.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, so motion and a second with a friendly amendment.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Uh, Darren, I think.
Darren, thank you.
Uh, motion and a second, directing town staff to do some work on this commercial recreation overlay district. All those in favor, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
I abstain.
Okay. Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. All right, we're on to tiered site plan review system.
So, just given the, the time we have, I can either run through this quickly or we could just go to different parts of the PowerPoint that was in your packet that you may have questions on, whichever you'd prefer, Mr. Chair.
It's a pleasure of the board.
I went through it, so I mean?
Yeah. I've read through it as well. I mean, um?
Hit the highlights.
And I think we've been talking about this for a little while.
Executive summary?
I appreciate, I appreciate all the research you've done up until now.
Yeah, so we just tried to, you know, generate a high-level discussion. This was something of interest to the board a few years ago.
Yeah.
Some major projects in town, kind of shifted some priorities. Looking to get that back in front of you now. We kind of looked at, in the presentation, where we're at, and what does that imply? How is site plan review utilized throughout the Commonwealth? Just for, in general, the way the bylaw is now. Pretty much any commercial or multifamily project is gonna require site plan review. The way the bylaw is written, technically it should be a full site plant, full site plan review with public notification requirements, public hearing. The board has used discretion over time to look at some projects that are really modest in scope, to administratively review those. Staff to do some research on this. Since 2015, there's been thirty-seven that have been going through an administrative review in front of the board. So you're talking about, you know, half a dozen a year or so. So again, that, whether you're talking about a, a full-scale, you know, development coming in or something that's a lot more modest for a small business looking to fill space, technically they're required to go through the same process with the public notification requirements. But I think the board recognizes that there could be some opportunities to try to streamline the permitting for some of those smaller projects. You have other communities in the Commonwealth that utilize a tiered system. Some right around us, Pepperell, Chelmsford. And what you kind of see with two tiers is a minor and a major category. Minor is the kind of amendment, or excuse me, administrative process that you've utilized in the past. Come in front of the board, regularly scheduled meeting. There's no public notification, no, excuse me, no public hearing process, but it's reviewed by the board. The major, whether you're talking to two or three, that's the full scale. Notices go out, it's a public hearing. And then on a, on a three-tier side, there's even an administrative tier added where the board doesn't even see it. It's something that's, you know, seems to be so banal that it just is reviewed by designated staff to go ahead and issue a decision for that. So look to give an example of what that could look like on a three-tier system. So say for an administrative, you have something where a use is allowed by right in the underlying zoning district. And the parking requirement is equal to or less than the current use. And, you know, for this purposes, assume there's plenty of parking available on site. An example that could be like, the board recently saw over 1175 Littleton Road, supercuts moved in for a, any cigarette business over there. Then you go on what could be an example of a minor for a change of use condition. Use is allowed by right, again, in the underlying zone district. Park requirement is greater than the current use, but there's still plenty of parking available on site that exists. Example, that could be something the board reviewed at 323 Littleton Road. Changed from business professional office to retail, sales, or leasing of motor vehicles. And then a major, say the use is allowed by a special permit or use is allowed by right, but they have to do, you know, changes to the parking lot, expand it, changes to drainage, et cetera. You know, something like 124 Main Street, law four. You have demolition of structures, you have converting a single to a two, something like that, full site plan. There'll be considerations in the future for multifamily with the MBTA communities requirements. They'll have to be considered over time. And as well, existing conversion of a dwelling, which requires a special permit right now. Let's convert a single up to four units. Right now, kind of silent on if you had, for instance, a, a two family, you wanted to change it to a three. You can't really use conversion of a dwelling for a special permit in this case, and you're probably talking use variance. Then just something to think about as we try to get some general direction before we maybe look at drafting bylaw language for the board's review. What are the, you know, the big considerations of the board in terms of parking lot? Is it amount of impervious surface that's getting added that may influence what you think could be a minor or a major or administrative? Is it traffic impacts? Is it the parking requirements themselves, what it could be? Skip around. I'm just talking about, you know, also thinking about parking requirements incentives. We heard about EV charging stations. Maybe if folks are putting that in, maybe that influences what you may see. E-commerce just taking off, so just something to think about is maybe less parking is gonna be necessary for more, and more deliveries are gonna be happening. Temporary seasonal uses, so if folks wanna remove parking and they wanna have outdoor dining, it's gonna be out there during the summer months. Does that need anything, any kind of review in front of, in front of the board or at administrative level? If there are conditions of approval, can staff, if it was decided a, a three-tier system was what you were looking for, can staff put conditions of approval on a decision that's issued? Will there be different submission requirements based on what tier you're submitting at? Another thing to consider. And then, we had one point, thought about having little signs for each of the boards to think about. Do you want, do you consider something like this an administrative, a minor, or a major? But we didn't go that route.
You could discuss it several times. That would be pretty funny.
It would be interesting.
Yeah. Um, so it's a different scenarios to play out. So like, you know, in this example, change from retail use to restaurant use. Retail bylaw today is one space per one hundred and eighty square feet. Restaurant parking is one space for every three seats. So say your space is fifteen hundred square feet. So for retail, you're required to have nine spaces. So for restaurant, had, was looking to have thirty seats, now they need ten spaces. Is that a minor? Is that a major? Is that administrative? Twenty-four seats, so now it's only eight. So you're going down. Or what about, you know, twenty and ten? You're gonna have some outdoor and indoor seating. Now they're going more than nine spaces, that's ten spaces. So again, just things to think about. And we don't, you know, we just wanted to get some kind of general direction from the board again.
Yeah.
In terms of bylaw amendments, you know, going through each of these kind of scenarios and what you, what you may or may not be thinking at this point.
Yeah. Great. I think it's a good backup. Let's switch order. Bob, do you have any comments on a tiered site plan review system?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I appreciate all the work, very informative briefing materials. And, um, yeah, I, I would like to pursue this, definitely.
Great.
That's it.
I agree. The only problem with your presentation is you're just showing all the things and how do you create a, a change that's not specific scenario-specific? And yet, make it, make it general enough, but it covers everything. That, that's very tough.
Yeah?
General and clear.
Yeah, it's clear, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a lot of subjective stuff. The only thing with the three-tiered one is that puts the onus on staff to decide whether or not it should be administrative.
No.
Yeah, the way the bylaw would be written.
That would be the bylaw saying?
If you're meeting this threshold, you're a major. You're, you know, at, at this threshold, you're a minor, and anything?
Yeah, well, right now, you guys are the ones who are making the, the call. And you're recommending to us that we think this could be treated as administrative.
Actually, that is the building commissioner when he renders his opinions.
Okay.
And you are not required to take his opinions as an order. You have your own, it's up to you. You have your own discretion to choose how you wanna approach it.
But we always do what you tell us to do, so.
But that would be the case going forward, too. I mean, if there was a, kind of a, one that was worth discussion, we just have a discussion about it. We still have that ability.
Mike, Mike, your thoughts?
I just think there would be less discretion going forward.
Yeah.
So, which I'm fine with. It would be more black and white, nailed down on the bylaw.
Yeah.
But I like it, 'cause right now, we have the discussion, we spend twenty minutes discussing if we should do administrative approval, whereas we could have the, the same discussion and we vote, yeah. It's a minor, we approve this minor change.
Well, and the applicant has to wait until we have a meeting.
That's, that's the other thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Is I think, I mean, what was interesting is that there's been thirty-seven cases where this has happened. And, you know, I can't think of any in my time on the board where there's been a negative consequence for having allowed something to go through an administrative review.
I think the board has been very fair. I mean, while it may not be backed up in writing in the bylaw, I don't think you've made bad decisions and done bad things with your discretion. I think you were, I think, careful to not wanna cross that line. And so I think if anything, you've erred on sign of caution, which is, is good. But it's just, it just makes sense, like, I mean, it's kind of, you've been doing this sort of unofficial practice now since, I think, before I started here.
Yeah.
So it just, why not codify what the practice has been? And we're just trying to get some high-level direction from you folks, like?
The change in use is such a clear example when, you know, the, the changed use is gonna require less parking. I mean, I mean, you know, why are we, why are we doing this? You know what I mean, honestly?
So if it's, so, but that's the direction we're looking for. It's a change in use.
And it requires less parking, then you're considered a?
Well, just any, yeah, a use thing where nothing changes, no other requirement changes.
Right.
Not just parking, but anything else.
And then there's probably some things that, you know, if there's new construction of a certain size, you're probably gonna wanna see it anyhow, even, even minor. But maybe if it's a minor size or square footage, or if it doesn't change the parking requirements, you know, then maybe that's something you care to look at as minor.
Yeah.
Instead of a public hearing. And then the other thing we have to think about that was in Joe's slides are what makes sense to actually get recorded? Like, obviously, public hearings, kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah.
It should be recorded, and a lot of them are required to, all special permits. But, you know, there isn't necessarily a requirement that even your site plans be recorded now. And then if you do a minor, you know, that's, that can be, that can be a burden, particularly for small businesses to go through that process. So it sounds like if there's not a lot of actual construction happening, you might be more inclined to minor? Is that right?
I would agree.
And then maybe there's some limit, like, if they're adding only like two parking spaces or if they're doing something seasonally or something, maybe minor? Maybe?
Well, couldn't get all the way around the horn. Mike, do you have any other comments on the concept in general?
No.
No. Darren?
No, I like it. I could, I'm, I'm in favor of the three-tier. I think it's great.
Yeah. Chelmsford and Pepperell, you said, they have two-tiered systems.
Pepperell definitely has two. I think Chelmsford is a three.
Okay. All right, so, so there are neighboring communities that we can look at how they've drafted this. I mean, I, I agree. I'm in favor. I, I, I would like a three-tiered system as long as it doesn't become overly cumbersome because I think there are things that should just be administratively reviewed and, and approved. Like the, when, there was a couple of times where we heard offices that were being converted into like learning centers. But like, they're
but like very individual, like tutoring services, this wasn't like a school, and I'm like, you know, these are, these are not things that we should necessarily have to opine on, to, you know. A tenant just wants to occupy a space for a very slightly different use with no parking impact, and a, and an existing building, and the foot, and the footprint of the building's not even going to change. To me, those seem like things that can just be handled by administrative staff.
Yep.
I agree. So you think we have enough direction to take a stab at it, and maybe we can come back with some scenarios and voting cards?
Voting cards, I love the voting card idea.
You must see TV.
I like it. Even on the administrative one, you could just do a summary every couple of meetings or something, like, hey, by the way, there were three things administratively handled.
But that would also be an opportunity to say, okay, I see you did this one administratively, I get why you thought you could, and yes, you can, but maybe we want to see that kind going forward for a while, because maybe it's, you know. So we could get that in the correspondence part of the packet, maybe every once a quarter or something, just get an update.
Just so we know what's going on, yeah.
Yeah. In that way, if you need to make adjustments, like you don't need to change, if you tell us that we want to see this type, even if the bylaw, you know, I mean, we can put that in, work that into the language, as long as we know that, to have some flexibility, so.
Good.
Great, okay. Enough to get started, Joe? Awesome. Well, thank you very much for the work.
Thank you.
It was very comprehensive. Okay, so that concludes general business topic D. We are on to general business topic E, which is board reorganization and appointments for the following positions for next year. Chair, vice chair, NIMCOG, Community Preservation Committee, Stormwater Panel, Pedestrian Safety Committee, and we have a request for a representative to attend a new working group. Should we handle that, these in order then?
Sure.
Great.
I nominate Dylan for chair.
Second.
Appreciate.
Not waste any time in there, huh?
I appreciate the, the votes of support. All right, well, motion and a, I mean, any discussion? Do you accept the nomination? I, I will accept the nomination if my colleagues feel that I should continue to do the job.
You've done a good job, so we're happy letting you fill out your two-year term.
Yeah, thank you. Motion and a second, appointing Dylan O'Connor as chair of the planning board for another year, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Say aye. Vice chair?
I nominate Mike.
Second.
Motion and a second, well, any discussion, do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination, thank you.
Okay. A motion and a second for Mike as vice chair, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye.
Thank you.
All right, representative to NIMCOG, Dan?
Yeah, so I've had this for a while, so I, if anybody has any interest in doing NIMCOG, happy to have someone else be a new face, I don't mind doing it, but.
What night is it?
It's Wednesday nights, once a month, it's generally the first, the second Wednesday. So it's the same week we have our second meeting. But it's, it's like Monday and Wednesday of that week, and the, the meetings are back to in-person, so they're in Lowell. And they're at seven o'clock on Wednesday nights. They're generally an hour.
Yeah, is there like a continuity element, where you feel like there'd be a gap in continuity at this point, since you've had it for a while?
No, no, like I said, I mean, I don't mind continuing on, but like I said, if somebody else is interested, happy to give someone else a shot at it.
I'm interested, but I, I can't do it on the Wednesday, so.
Oh, okay.
Nominate Darren?
Second. Motion and a second to have Darren Weesbe our representative to NIMCOG, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. All right, we have representative to CPC, so I've done this for, I think, two years now, three years now, two or three years now. It's been a while. Great group, you know, it, it's, you know, predominantly kicks up December, January timeframe, sometimes a little bit earlier, and then sometimes we're hearing things into the start of spring as we get ready for, for town meeting, but don't mind, I don't mind continuing, if you guys would let me to continue. I know Kate, you were, I think you were the representative before me, if, if you had an interest, or if somebody else has an interest, I'm, I'm happy to take on a different responsibility, but.
Since you're the chair, you're not being overburdened, but are you?
No, 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 it's, it's fine, I mean, it's a, it's a good group, and, you know, it, what happens is that, you know, you have a lot of meetings, as you know, you have a lot of meetings in a short period of time, and then it kind of goes quiet for a long period of time, so it's, it's fine.
I nominate, what's your name, Dylan?
Dylan. Second. Motion and a second for Dylan O'Connor to represent the board at the Community Preservation Committee, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. All right, we have representative to the Stormwater Panel.
I'd be interested in that if anybody wants to, uh, I don't know, you're currently doing it?
Who is it? No, I'm not.
It's a brand-new thing.
No, I thought you were, Dylan.
Oh, yeah, you are.
No, you're right, I am, we've only had one meeting.
And I'm the alternate.
We've only had one meeting, so yes, I am doing it, doesn't, doesn't come up much.
Okay.
They email you if you have to have, join a meeting, and I've had one meeting, and it was basically as the ground rules for the.
But if you're interested?
Yeah, I'm interested.
By all means.
I'll nominate Mike.
Second. Motion and a second to nominate Mike as the representative to the Stormwater Panel, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Pedestrian Safety Committee?
I'm happy staying with that.
Nominate Kate.
Motion and a second to nominate Kate to the Pedestrian Safety Committee as our representative, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Okay, we have been asked if we would have an interest in having a representative participate in the Net Zero Building Standards Working Group. This is not officially a, like, something that's been chartered by the select board as an official town committee, right? That's correct, so it is an ad hoc committee, the select board is aware of, of them, and they have expressed certainly support for these efforts. But it is ad hoc, and I don't think there's any required sort of membership, like, there isn't a mandate that a person from this committee and so forth. It's all kind of volunteer meet as they can. There are some great things in their charge, there are some, as we know from earlier tonight, there are some limitations. I know they have an intention to try to take the municipal projects, find out standards that they'd like to have for those town projects going forward, because you can always impose your own restrictions on, you know, on yourself, and comply with standards higher than what's required by others. But there are some areas that, there was one meeting so far where we made it clear that there are some things at the planning board, hate to say it, you lack jurisdiction, because your power really stems from subdivision control law. Yep. And the zoning bylaw, which has to be consistent with chapter forty-eight master general law, which says you cannot regulate that, which is covered by building code. And so that means you can't do, as we heard earlier, like, a lot of mandates Right. on things covered by code, but that does not mean that there can't be opportunities for creating incentives. But you've got to, you know, create meaningful incentives if you want people to abide by that, so, so yeah, so it's. It's more of an information pipeline than anything, right, of like what that group is working on and how, and then we could use that to affect our thinking on things, like. So I think, so I, what I do think is that, well, it is ad hoc, they are looking for specific standards for municipal, and to the extent possible, they'd like to see how that can be translated into residential, commercial, you know, non-municipal. And so we have a lot of things going on, our commissioner is not here at the moment, but a lot of these things may take changes to the state building code to filter through, but that's for mandates, but there are, there could be other opportunities, and I think whether or not there's a formal member participating, or if you seek to get updates on occasion, that would be great to have benefit of what those folks are doing, because, you know, it doesn't hurt to ask, even if you can't require, and so maybe you would have some ideas or thoughts that you would not have, otherwise have, if you're not getting either updates or, or participating, so. Anyone have an interest in participating?
I'm already on an ad hoc committee that might eventually meet again.
It will. I wouldn't say that one's ad hoc, really, post agenda. Bob, I know your travel schedule is pretty tough, probably precludes participation in something like this?
Yeah, the question is, is if it's an ad hoc, could they do Zoom and things like that?
Well, that was, that was one thing I noticed, I, I mean, I think it's, is it Beth Perkins, is that who? Beth Perkins, yes. She has me on the emails, and I did notice they were trying to organize a meeting for like, like, one o'clock in the afternoon, I think, last week or something, and I was like, okay, well, this is, this is going to be a little tricky for me. If this is the time of day of the meeting.
That's handy for me.
Yeah.
But, but I mean, again, I've seen, I've seen two sort of meetings coming together, and it seemed like the people who were chiming in were making it seem like more afternoon and middle of the day worked better for their schedules, which is.
Maybe request at this point just updates from them, and
Yeah.
and then at some point, you know, if it's.
Unless, Bob, you want to sit on, in on it, because it's interesting.
If it's the middle of the afternoon back there, I'm, I'm perfectly able to support those, that's easy.
The last meeting was at seven o'clock at night, six o'clock at night, here? Okay. But that was the first meeting, so I don't know what it's going to be, but it was in the. There was emails flying around, people saying that the middle of the day worked better for them, though. There were some, but for whatever reason, the first meeting was evening. Yes.
So Bob, if it's in the, in the middle of the day east coast, you'd be willing?
Yeah, I mean, that'd be perfect, if that's eight o'clock at night, I'd be meeting time.
Second. All right, so motion and a second to nominate Bob as our representative to the Net Zero Building Standards Working Group
Pending
the timing of the meetings aligning to his travel schedule.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Sounds good to me.
Is that fair, Bob?
That's fair.
Okay, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye.
What if Bob said nay?
Then I would have, then I would have said nay. I respect that. Okay. Oh, yeah, please.
I have a, a question, chair.
Yep.
Could I get the name of the, this committee here, because the EV charging stations working group have recommendations for building standards.
Yep. It's the Net Zero Building Standards Working Group. Yep.
You know Beth Perkins?
Yeah, yeah.
Talk to her.
Oh, okay.
It's the Net Zero Building Standards Working Group.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay.
If you grab a, a agenda on the way out, you can see it's on the, it's written on there, on the back.
Yeah, I have it written on it?
Yeah, so in section E, under general business.
Okay.
Net zero, yeah, no name.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, I meant Beth, Beth's name.
All right.
All right, we are on to home stretch here. Yes, the minutes from May sixteenth meeting, is there a motion to approve the minutes from May sixteenth?
Don't move, second.
Motion and a second to approve, is there any discussion?
I had one on, on the last part, like around line one seventy-four, talks about the votes to recommend the articles, and we also voted on supporting Article eighteen, so if you want to just add above there, sorry. Or is it, yeah, like one sixty-eight, one sixty-nine, if you want to just copy that and paste in for that.
Article eighteen.
To recommend approval of Article eighteen.
Well, eighteen was the one you had earlier in the evening.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, never mind.
That was the actual public.
Okay, all righty, thanks.
Now, as it turns out, just as an update, for forty-three Groton Road, the petitioner is not going to present at town meeting. They're actually closing on the property a couple of days after town meeting, so they won't be actually attending town meeting. Okay. Just letting you know. Okay.
So who's presenting?
At this point, no one.
Do you need someone to present it?
Do I need someone to present?
I do not.
Do we need to present? But the, the question may come up, is there anyone wanting to present this article to town meeting? So the question is, does.
Since it's a zoning one, it makes sense that.
You would be the first target, I'm sure. Sure, I, I'm happy to present something, can I have a short statement?
Sure, we can.
Sure.
Put something together.
Great, thanks, good. I'm in New York this week, I can, we can go back and forth in email if you want, if you can send me something in email, I can work on it on the train.
Sure.
Great. Okay. I, well, someone's got to say something, I can say something, that's fine. No, it's just whether you want to present it.
So if the applicant doesn't care, do we care, is the question.
Why is, that is the fundamental question, I guess.
Right.
That's the question, because normally it would be part of some study or something that you folks, you know, but if you still think it should.
But do they have a reason why they can't be there?
We're a total.
All right, so, so it's not a no, but.
There will be a handout at a town meeting as well that gives.
A breakdown, so, so if, if you and I can just exchange a quick, a couple of quick emails while I'm traveling to and from the city this week, in, in case, I mean, I think we can let that article go in front of town meeting, without anybody saying anything, and if there is a, is there anybody here to present something, I can stand up and say, this is the action we took and the reason why. We do have a handout prepared for town meeting, ready printed, that includes the board's recommendations. There you go. Should be a short email. All right, any other discussion about the minutes?
No.
No. Motion and a second to approve, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. And that concludes our meeting, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate? Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye, have a good evening, everybody. Don't be there, sir.